To move Agenda Item Resolution Number 2020-154A to the top of that list, ahead of Resolution Number 2020-150.
Oh.
Could you tell me the subjects? I don't have the agenda right.
Sorry, yeah, it's the property and liability renewal, just to the top of that agenda list.
Oh, okay. So Judy can go early?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that's good. Thank, okay, we have one change in the agenda. So is there anybody opposed to that change?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at an old agenda. I need to get the new one up, but go ahead.
It's been properly moved in second with a change in the agenda. All in favor?
Hi.
Roll call.
Do we have to have a roll call for the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Audience participation? Is there anyone for?
There is. The first person with their hand up is named Larry. I'm going to allow them to talk now.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is Larry Yap. I own 3242 North Huron. I sent a document up earlier today. Hopefully you've had a chance to read it. In case you haven't, I will summarize very briefly. I am really, really getting tired of being stonewalled by Mr. Barr. His comments basically break down into two groups. Why the city can't enforce its ordinances and why the city can't talk to me. And I tried to outline, respond to his comments, one by one by one, pointing out that there's actually no substance to his comments at all, and it's just pure stonewalling. He keeps changing the reason why ordinances aren't being enforced or why he can't talk to me or why city, excuse me, can't talk to me. So I'm calling to ask again, I would appreciate a conference with whoever in the city is in charge of ordinances. It's a good place to start. And let me just say, my parents always taught me that if you want to know the truth, you hear both sides of this story. Well, the city has totally refused to hear my side of the story, somehow thinking that they have the story 100% correct without ever talking to the other side. I get these email or letters, emails, whatever you want to call them, from Mr. Barr responding to questions that aren't even the questions that I immediately want to talk about. So he just doesn't even know what I want to talk about. And as I said in the last time that I called in, I would appreciate the respect, the respect that you would give to all constituents in the city, that you will at least sit down with me and listen and talk. We have major, multiple, I mean it's a major, but multiple issues we need to work through, some with ordinances, some with legal ownership, some with deeds, some with easements. And this is not going away. This will continue, continue to continue until we sit down and work through the issues. I don't want to end up back in court again. Mr. Barr pushed us into that mode the first time. But if we cannot resolve this, that's where we're going to end up again. I don't want to go there. I didn't want to go there before. Please, respect my request that we sit down and start working on these issues. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Yap.
Okay, the next person with their hand up is Lamar Weir. I'm going to allow them to speak now. Lamar, are you ready to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So Lamar, we're from Congresswoman Dingle's office. One, thank you for having me. And two, here to get some community updates to see what are some pressing issues that are going on in Ipsilanti, what are some plans moving forward? And also, just to see if our office could be of any assistance to help the Ipsilanti community at large. So thank you, that's it.
Thank you.
The next person with their hand up is Gail Wolkoff. I'll allow them to speak now.
Hi, this is Gail Wolkoff. First of all, I would love to say that I am glad that there's a proclamation honoring John Lewis. That's excellent. We were talking and learning about him today at the clubhouse. I am wearing my Ipsilanti Police Advisory Commission hat right now. And when I looked over the agenda and when I came to item B, I was surprised. We had not heard, the commission had not heard, or the commissioners had not heard anything about the community policing plan. We were not consulted. We knew nothing, we knew nothing about it. So I'm curious to learn about the community policing. I know that we've talked about it on the commission. And I don't know if you've gotten word from our chairperson that we've been talking about it on the commission. And just putting out there that we hadn't learned about it. And also requesting, we have our commissioner meeting on Thursday, and requesting that somebody from the council, a council member, regularly comes to our meetings to act as a liaison, because we do not have one at this point in time. So communication moves both directions. So I'm looking forward to hearing about the plan and the presentation and see how we can take this information and move it forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for?
The next individual with their hand up is named Kate. I will allow them to speak now.
Hello, Council. Mayor Richardson. In February, I started a petition to allow native plant and pollinator habitats in our yards. And so far, the petition has 137 signatures, 53 on paper, and 84 online. I present the petition in support of the resolution that the Sustainability Commission just passed and brought before council today. And I'm going to read it and then I will send you the petition and a PDF of the signatures. As residents of the City of Ipsilanti, we urge you to change Article 4 Weed Control of the Ipsilanti Code of Ordinances to allow residents to cultivate pollinator-friendly habitats in their yards. Our planet, our country, our state, and our city are experiencing an extinction emergency. The pollinators upon which our food crops depend are under threat of extinction, along with many, many other species that contribute to the environmental safety net that makes the land we live on habitable for humans. Habitat loss is one of the main causes of the decrease in pollinator populations. This is a direct result of land use. Both development and conventional agriculture destroy the plants and habitats which provide food and shelter to pollinators and many other threatened species. Ipsilanti can directly support the pollinators so vital to our existence by permitting the establishment of pollinator-friendly habitats in our yards. This change in land use would also benefit the watershed by decreasing runoff and erosion and reducing pollution from lawn chemicals and the fossil fuels used in mowing. Ipsilanti's continued role as a leader in modern sustainable communities would be enhanced by this change in ordinance, and it would support the city's current status as a B-City USA. Finally, we ask that the city's conventional standards regarding the way lawns and gardens should look expand to include an understanding of sustainability and environmental health. Pollinator-friendly habitats should not be required to look like managed gardens to satisfy an arbitrary aesthetic. Residents of the City of Ipsilanti ought to have the right to support the pollinators that support our food shed and our ecosystem by creating habitats for them in our own front and backyards. Thank you. And the resolution that Sustainability Commission passed fulfills all of these things that the petition is asking for. The signature collecting is possibly ongoing. The online petition, the paper petition, I had to stop after just a couple days because of the shutdown that came for COVID. So I'm not doing the paper petition anymore. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual with their hand raised is Desiree Simmons. I will allow them to talk now.
Hello, Desiree, thank you. I'm just wanting to give a comment on the upcoming presentation about community policing. I kind of had a chance to look through the presentation. I just wanted to name a couple of points. In the definition of community policing, it starts with a focus on crime and social disorder. I imagine a future where we focus on safety, health, and community well-being. And this is something that I don't know is, that could come through community policing. It talks about partnership with the police and the community. And I wonder how far and deep does this partnership go? What recourse do residents have if they feel abused by the police department? Or if they have concerns about officers or things of that sort? What are the mechanisms for accountability? If there's a partnership, there needs to be mechanisms for accountability built in. Otherwise, it's not a really good partnership. It feels very one-sided. Another measure, in a thing, it talks about measures of effectiveness. And I just want to name another measure of effectiveness that I think would be important. If we are instituting community policing, there should be a reduction in calls to the police. Because they should also have numbers of the other resources in the community that people can call instead of to the police, that the officers can even be sharing with the community, as well as education on the, for a community that should be part of the conversation of how do we actually change what public safety looks like? So we should be having conversations with the community about why we should be calling the police and why not. That should be part of any kind of community policing plan. And there should be, we should also be watching out to make sure that we don't, this doesn't cause prompt and increase in calls for crimes of inconvenience or other things of that sort. So we should know what the calls are coming in for in general. The other thing I would just say is that I have many concerns when I see kind of broad and general surveillance named as one of the parts of what would come with community policing. I think broad and general surveillance does not build in more safety for the community. And also, how do we make sure that the street enforcement is not racially biased and other things that we tend to see? And so what does that look like in terms of, again, accountability? So we make sure that what, that we have measures for what we want to see. And then I also just want to say that it sounds to me like this community policing might be actually a way to drive more money to the police department, where there's concerns about overtime expend-
Did we lose her?
Um, yeah.
Simmons, are you still there?
I can allow her to speak again. I don't know necessarily what happened.
Okay.
Hello, sorry about that. I just was saying that, I just want to say in terms of thinking about how we're moving more resources, when we're looking at things like overtime expenditures and things of that sort, that this should not be a way to drive more money to the police departments when so many in our community are talking about less money to the police and more money into other services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I don't see anyone else with their hand raised. If you'd like to, oh, there is another person, V. Brown. I will allow them to speak now.
This is Lee Tooth, and I'm going to talk just a little bit about police and community relations. Police and community relations are an important factor in police departments, I mean everywhere, it's an important factor. But it can only be effective if you have a working police chief. You have to have a working police chief if you want to be having effective police and community relations. And he or she has to lead by example. It's a good, it's a good tool to have, but it, but it's noted all over, everywhere that it's not something that a police administration really want. I mean, they'll tell you that they want it, but they really don't want that. And I'm going to explain to you why. Because it becomes, it becomes like micromanaging. And police, police departments, police administrations, they don't want to be part of, they want to be micromanaged. See, when people, when people get, when police officers get real close to people in the community, sometimes it becomes a threat to the administrative department. Tell you why. Because there are a lot of unfair things that goes on in police departments among policemen themselves. Mainly women. Women are not treated fair in police departments. They are talked down to, they are talked about, and they are misused. And when people, when administration see police officers getting close to people, they become paranoid because of the unfairness and the things that they be doing inside. And they hoping that it's probably getting leaked out. So they, they'll say they want police and community relations, but that's not necessarily the truth. But if it, if it is to happen at all, if it is to happen, you must have a working police chief that's working with the community, with the officers, and don't have the, and he or she cannot have the attitude that the police are working for them, but must have the attitude saying that they are working with them. The same thing happened in Ann Arbor a few years ago. We had a situation where we bought the same thing to the Ann Arbor Police Department. And we had a working police chief. When I say we, I mean NAACP, not just we. We, we, we had, we had a working police chief, and it was effective. But when he left, that thing faded off. And then the next year, we had a killing over, the woman got killed over on the, on the south end of Ann Arbor. So in order for it to work, you got to have a working police chief. If you don't have a working police chief, you would not have an effective police and community relationship. And I'm done.
Thank you.
Not seeing anyone else with their hands up currently.
Okay, if there's no one else, we will go on with the agenda, please.
The, the next section is presentations. And the first item on that section is a proclamation honoring Congressman John Lewis. And I will go ahead and read that now. So proclamation for Congressman John Roberts.
Could you share that on the screen, Andrew, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
The City of Ipsilanti is honored to acknowledge and pay tribute to Congressman John Lewis, an exceptional individual who achieved great accomplishments during his life. And whereas Congressman Lewis was born outside of Troy, Alabama, on February 21st, 1940, to sharecroppers. And whereas Congressman Lewis had a happy childhood, but shaved against fairness of segregation, particularly as the Supreme Court ruling in 1954's Brown v. the Board of Education did not affect his school life. And whereas Congressman Lewis left Alabama in 1957 to attend the American Baptist Theological Seminary in Nashville, Tennessee. It was there that he learned about nonviolent protests and helped to organize sit-ins at segregated lunch counters. And whereas Congressman Lewis was committed to the civil rights movement and went on to participate in the Freedom Riders of 1961, an organization that challenged the segregated facilities they encountered at interstate bus terminals in the South. In 1963, Congressman Lewis became a chairman of the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee. At that same year, he, as one of the six leaders of the civil rights movement, helped plan the March on Washington. And whereas Congressman Lewis and Hosea Williams led a march from Selma to Montgomery, Alabama, on March 7th, 1965. After crossing the Edmund Pettus Bridge, marches were attacked by state troopers. During that attack, Congressman Lewis was severely beaten, suffering a fractured skull. As after the assassinations of Martin Luther King Jr. and Robert Kennedy, Lewis left the SNCC, but continued his word to enfranchisement minorities. In 1970, he became director of the Voter Education Project, helping to register millions of minority voters. And as in 1981, Congressman Lewis ran and was elected for a seat on the Atlanta City Council. In 1986, Congressman Lewis was elected to the House of Representatives, becoming one of the most respected members of Congress. And as in 2002, Congressman Lewis visited Ipsilanti, campaigning with his friend John Dingle. And whereas Congressman Lewis was called, has called for healthcare reform, measures to fight poverty, and improvements to education. Most importantly, Lewis oversaw multiple renewals of Voting Rights Act. And when the Supreme Court struck down part of the law in 2013's Shelby County versus Holder, Lewis decreed the decision to be a dagger into the heart of voting rights. Not giving up or giving in, Congressman Lewis successfully presented a bill in 2019 in the House to Restore the Voting Rights Bill, and awaits approval in the Senate. And whereas Congressman Lewis was diagnosed with stage pancreatic cancer in December of 2019, he never stopped working to promote justice and equality for all Americans. One of his last public acts was to take a stand with the Black Lives Movement Matter movement and to physically stand on the Black Lives Matter mural in front of the White House, demonstrating. Fighter for democracy for all until his very end. Now, for I, Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ipsilanti, on behalf of the City Council and a debt of gratitude, thank Congressman John Lewis for his many years of dedicated service to the country and proclaim our deepest condolences in this time of mourning.
Thank you.
Thank you for reading.
Any comments?
Yeah, um, I was, I was speaking to one of my mentors, Bob Hoffman in Maryland, and he was, he was one of John Lewis's, like friends and partners. He was sharing some stories with me. And it's crazy that, I mean, they both were 80 years old. And just to think about how, when you read the proclamation, how much time people have spent on the front line in cruel freedom attempting to work on our behalf. And, and still, like I said, up to his dying day, you would think that, that some people would feel like when they say, "We shall overcome someday", you would think that they would be reprieved that still having to fight to his very last breath. It's an honorable thing for those on the front line for us. I just want to pay my respects now into the next world for Brother John Lewis.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
You know, I just wanted to also pay my respects and kind of piggyback on, Councilmember Morgan said, you know, Congressman Lewis did so many things and continued to fight for so long. And to think that he, like, you know, he said, took his last breath still in the fight, is really telling of where we are and how much further we have to go. And the one thing that I will keep with me and I always, you know, always have to this point is, you know, his comments on Good Trouble. And so we're going to continue, you know, create some good trouble so we can continue the work and the fight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no other hands, I would just like to say, I did have the pleasure of meeting Congressman Lewis when he was in Ipsilanti, he was in Ipsilanti and in Ann Arbor, campaigning with Congressman John Dingle. And it was really a blessing for me to be able to interact with both of these giants of men and giants in the world of working towards democracy and equality for all. Mr. Congressman Lewis was, he was a soft-spoken man. And even when he gave speeches, even though what he was saying was mighty, unless he really got in his preacher mode, he was soft-spoken. I, along with you, Mayor Pro Tem Brown, I do, I remember one of the clips that they kept them playing over and over this weekend, was he said, where he said, "If you see something wrong, say something. Don't just stand there, say something and go on and get in trouble, get in good trouble." And I think that that's a time that we're living in where we're going to have to even do, do more of that. I often think of, when I read and hear of his being a part of the Freedom Riders. I was, I was a freshman at Eastern at the time, and I so wanted to go and join the Freedom Riders. But my family being from Alabama and knowing the South, of course, there was, there was that fear, and they said, "No". So I just couldn't go. The only reason I couldn't was because family wouldn't let me go. But believe me, in my heart, that I felt the job, the work that they were doing. And we still have so much work to do, so much work. We've come a long way, but we've got a long way to go. I do just commend Congressman Lewis for all he's done. And he is one that I think that really deserves to be acknowledged from now on. And I know there is a push and a move to name that Edmund Pettus Bridge after him. And I plan to support that. So anyone else before we move on? All right. Thank you very much for reading that, Clerk Kalinga. We will go to the next item on the agenda, please.
The next item on the agenda is the presentation regarding community policing plan. I can, would council like me to share my screen for the presentation?
Please do.
Okay. Yeah, I thought the manager was gonna make some comments first.
Francis is actually not going to be in in on the meeting tonight. She had a family thing.
Okay. All right. Well, then I guess I'll go. Mayor, members of council, other attendees on the call. I'm actually pretty excited about this this presentation. And just a couple of things, I know there was a lot of comments and questions and whatnot. And this is an introductory type presentation. I didn't intend on covering all the bases in the first ten slides. And to Commissioner Wolkoff's comment, this is actually on the agenda for Thursday night to be presented to them as well. I think it's on the agenda. It's called the City Council's Report. I'm not sure why it was put that way, but that's what, when this was going to be presented to the Advisory Commission. The manager and I have been talking about this, and she felt it was important to bring this forward as quickly as as we could. And this was the first available time to do that. So that being said, moving on to the first slide. So this is where we've been. We've been in a traditional reactive policing mode. And that's been mostly because of shortages at the police department. In fact, when I came here in thirteen, we were down to twenty-three officers, which I think was an all time low for the city. And we were working towards this particular model when Mr. Lang was here. And we were, the goal was to reach thirty-two officers. We never actually did hire that many officers. And then when Mr. McCurley came, there were some budget issues, and we were cut that way back down to twenty-six again. So we're back in reactive mode. Thankfully, we are at full staff for what we're budgeted for. And the plan originally required four more officers than what we actually have now. But we've decided to move some things around and see how it's going to work out because we feel that moving to this model is important. So that being said, a lot of the problem that we've had so far is a shortage of people, which then creates a shortage of time to get the work done. And the assignment of the work to the personnel should be within certain classifications. Patrol officers shouldn't be taking cases and investigating all the way through to the end. That requires them to take time away from patrol and making citizen contacts and all the other things that we want them to do to actually carry a caseload. That's been a continuous problem. So the common denominator in all this is that everyone has been short on time. And I think that now that we're at thirty, at thirty officers, we'll be able to change some of the assignments and make some time to get the things done that we need to get done. Go to the next slide, please. So the definition of community policing, this is actually from the Peeling of Principles. It's not all encompassing. This is just kind of a little introduction to what started way back in eighteen twenty-nine. This isn't, this isn't new. This is something that has come and gone. I liken it to back in the forties and fifties when we had beat officers who walked the same streets. They knew all the people. That was true community policing. Probably the worst thing that happened to community policing was they gave police officers cars. You know, that kind of gave them the mobile office to go out and do business, and it kind of separated them from the people. So we want to try and get back to the principles of being out there with the citizens, with the businesses, finding out the problems are, working on them together so we can address issues effectively. So it's going to require a shift of focus. Traditionally, police departments have evaluated officers in the ways you see here. Number of arrests, numbers of tickets issued, number of cases cleared, response times. And all these are important markers. It's not really the focus of community policing. So the refocus is going to be measuring the effectiveness, not by the number of arrests, but rather the lack of crime. So instead of seeing how many arrests we're making, we want to watch the numbers of crimes that are being reported going down. So we know that we're actually doing the right things in partnership with the community to make everything safer. So that's one metric. The public perception of safety in the community, how people feel is important, and it's difficult to measure. But people will be able to tell you whether they feel like they're safe in their neighborhood. And that's, again, something else that we want to strive for. And then partnerships, mental health. We've got a pretty good partnership with community mental health that that can improve. There are other community groups that we reach out to, there are substance abuse agencies that we can do more with. That's all part of this this philosophy. And again, if you look at the fourth pillar, the fourth pillar of the President's Task Force, it concentrates on all these areas and especially the number of non-law enforcement contacts that police officers have with the community. That's that's really something that's very prevalent throughout that fourth pillar. And I think when you see how we're going to arrange the department, you'll be able to see if we'll be able to do that more effectively.
Chief, before you go on, could you talk a little bit more about the about pillar four?
Sure. So I happen to have the report right here because I thought you might ask. So pillar four is actually labeled as the Community Policing and Crime Reduction pillar of the of the actual report. And some of the really important things are talked that they talk about. Our law enforcement agency develop and adopt policies and strategies to reinforce the importance of community engagement and managing public safety. Law enforcement agency consider adopting preferences for seeking least harm resolutions, such as diversion programs or warnings and moves citations. So we've kind of done some of those things already. If you remember, last year, we had some serious problems at the the Transit Center. And we were under a lot of pressure to go on in there and try and do zero tolerance stuff. And we told them we weren't going to try and wrestle our way out of it because that wasn't the way to go. And so we did some other things with with a lot of the community youth groups. It didn't solve all the problems, but it definitely mitigated the situation. Another part of it is community policing should be infused throughout the culture and organizational structure of law enforcement agency. And you're going to see how that's going to work out in the upcoming slides. It's pretty, it's pretty lengthy and extensive. It's got probably twenty recommendations. So I won't go through all of them at this time. But we've looked at a lot of the things that are in there that this program's going to focus on.
Thank you.
Certainly. So this is the proposed organizational structure. You can see that there's going to be an addition of two detectives. There is one thing that's changed actually today. I found out from the superintendent of schools that the school board has decided to not have school resource officers in any of the Ypsilanti schools. So the SRO position there, under the detectives, will not be there. But, you know, every problem is an opportunity. So I will get to where we're going to place that person here in a second. But you'll see that the shifts will have lieutenant de sergeant and three patrol officers on each team. So what we've done basically is we've removed one patrol officer from each one of those teams to be able to flex them into other assignments. And that's where that overtime piece may play in regards to structural overtime with people taking time off. So that being said, you'll see a thing called the COPCRU. So that's an acronym. It's called the Cop Crew. And it's basically the Community Policing Crime Reduction Unit. It's slated to have a sergeant and two patrol officers in it. And it's a direct report to my office. So at least to begin with. It its mission needs to be very focused, and it needs to be managed very carefully. So with with any unit, when you're short people, command officers will tend to draw them from other places to try and assist. And that's not what we want to happen. We want these this unit to do what it's supposed to do. So there are going to be a direct report to the chief of police right now.
What exactly are they going to, what exactly is the correct cop crew to do?
Yeah, we're going to get, we're going to get to that in just a second. So the SRO position, you'll see that moved over as another police officer under the cop crew. And so the cop crew will actually be assigned, each assigned an area of the city. That additional person that was the SRO will now become what we're going to call the youth liaison officer that's going to work in that unit. So we have a lot of youth groups in town. We have Gail's group. We have Emmanuel's group, Mentor Youth. There's all kinds of things that happen with youth at the Parkridge Center. Those are things that that officer is going to try and concentrate on. So the cop crew is basically a unit that's going to be, you know what, actually, I think is on the next slide. Well, it's not, I'm not sure where it is. It's on one of the slides. It's coming up, if you'd be patient with me for a minute. So this plan is a phased in approach because the changes of assignments are going to require some training and some actually across the board training in community policing. Because we want this to not only be the COPCRU unit that's doing it. This is going to be a department wide, functional, community policing philosophy. So again, everybody in the department's going to get some level of COP training. The cop crew will get more of it, especially in community engagement areas. The detectives that we're going to be putting in the detective bureau to free up time for the patrol officers so they don't have to continue carrying cases. They're going to, they need to get some training, some basic detective training so that they can actually carry a caseload and do their jobs effectively. So there's a lot of things that are going to be going on. And we really have to piece it together a piece at a time. This isn't something that's going to be able to be changed overnight.
Right. Okay. Is there another screen that's going to explain COP more?
Yes.
Okay.
So next screen, Andrew. So this, the COP is going to have a lot of different activities they're going to do. So they're going to have community engagement pieces that they're going to do, but also be available to do investigations. They're also available to hit trouble spots. And so I know there was a question that talked about surveillance. And what we're talking about surveillance is, everybody on council is very aware that a few months ago, we had a rash of larceny from autos. People walk into neighborhoods pulling on doors. So that would be one of the things that they might be able to work on as they're not assigned to patrol, and they're more of a freelance unit working out of the chief's office. We'd be able to assign them to say, okay, why don't you sit in the neighborhoods and watch and see if we can catch who's stealing all the stuff out of people's cars? So that's, when we're talking about surveillance, we're not talking about actually surveilling people or following people around. And maybe surveillance is is one of those words that is a an attention getter, if you will. But that's, we're talking about using using surveillance in a way of be able to prevent or stop crime, not necessarily keeping track of people. So again, phase one would be the reallocation of personnel from patrol to the detective bureau so we can take those cases away from the patrol officers. And they can go out there and be be able to spend more time on each run that they go on, be able to make those non-law enforcement contacts. Also, we'll be making assignments where the same officers will be patrolling the same areas of the city. So thereby, the people in those areas will become more familiar with those officers. So currently, the two detectives will get the assistance of two more before detectives assigned to the detective bureau. Next slide, please. So again, geographic assignments and accountability. So the city's going to be divided in three patrol areas. And we haven't really decided what those actual patrol boundaries will be, if you will, or those areas. We're still looking at the data to try and even it out as far as the number of runs we take, etc. We don't want to overburden one and have someone else not doing very much work. So again, the officers will be assigned those geographic areas, better familiarity. And then, as the detectives become more experienced and we're able to better manage a caseload, we're actually going to assign a detective to an area as well. So then the detective and the four officers that are assigned to patrol that area will have regular meetings to talk about the things that they see and the information they're getting from different places so they can develop strategies for problem solving and sharing of information back and forth between the officers and the detective and that group and the cop crew and the cop crew and the community. So it's one entire group and flow of work as opposed to little patchwork pieces. So this, some people call this a team policing effort. It kind of is. Andrew, the next slide, please. So the phase three will actually be the implementation of the cop crew. Again, so because I didn't know about the SRO until this morning, it's actually going to be a sergeant with three patrol officers. And again, we'll take an all resources approach. A lot of times we'll go to community meetings and people will say they're speeding on the street, a stop sign that no one ever stops on the street. So they they may do some traffic details. There may be some street enforcement issues. There may be, they're going to go to community meetings. They're going to attend community events. A big part of their their thing is going to be community engagement. And also, when we have a large case, you know, like we we do on occasion, they be available to work with the detective bureau as well. As opposed to freezing everything going on in the detective bureau and all the detectives working on it. The bureau can continue to manage their cases, and the cop crew can assist one of the detectives in bringing that case to a conclusion, a logical conclusion. And again, so the personnel for this unit will be taken from the current patrol division. So we're actually taking and rearranging the pieces that we have. So there's no, there's no additional personnel that are required to do this. Next, Andrew. Again, so the challenges, we have a very young department. We have many new officers, and we're going to assign them to jobs that would normally be normally given to more seasoned officers. There may be someone who gets a detective job that has three years on the road, and that's relatively uncommon. So it will be challenging, especially for the supervision of those functions. And everybody's going to have to hurry up and speed up and catch up and maybe grow into a position supposed to be already ready for it. However, again, this is an opportunity because the officers are new. They're more receptive to new ideas and methods. So community policing is something that we can use as a cultural foundation for the way we do business. As opposed to trying to change something, we can just start something with the right people.
Can I interject here for a question? I'm just curious about what the usual trajectory is for a patrol officer to become a detective. You were mentioning that you've got a young force and that this is this is sooner than usual. But, you know, I'm wondering what the what the training is and what the usual time course is for that kind of movement.
Well, that's, again, it depends on the agency, how big it is, how active they are. I'm a little more comfortable here doing that because a lot of the patrol officers, again, are doing investigations already because there isn't anybody to pass them off to. So they're already ahead of the curve. So, you know, I couldn't give you an average, to be honest with you. It runs the gamut. You know, it's like, how long does somebody need to get promoted? That's that's also a kind of a catch question. It depends on the individual. Some people came here with experience. So they may not have been here for for more than a couple of years, but maybe they had a couple of years somewhere else. Officer Lyons would be one of those examples. He's been here three years, but he came from Missouri and worked there for three years before he came here. So there's a lot of different variables. I'm not sure I answered your question.
That's good enough for now. That's good enough for now. I'll look up some other stuff and then I'll talk to you on Thursday, too.
Sure. Okay, and so last but not least, there are a few things in the contract that could make this a little easier for us. So I'll be meeting with the Patrol Officers Union to try and talk out some of those issues, and we'll see where you can go with that. But that's not a make it or break it for this this particular venture. It would be nice if they changed some of those things, but it's not, it's not required. It's not going to stop us from doing anything. I entertain any questions that you have. I know this is kind of quick and down and dirty. But again, this is just an outline of where we want to go and some of the things that we're trying to accomplish.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Thank you. So thanks for your presentation, chief. The first thing that I thought of when you were talking about the patrol officers who would be assigned to specific areas with a detective, and so then they would learn that area. I have two questions. First one, will they ever then have opportunity? I mean, unless, I know, like emergent calls where maybe everyone would have to go somewhere. Would they ever like rotate through so that they learn the other parts of the neighborhoods as well rather than just being permanently in like one area of the city? That's the first question. That's the first question. And then the second question actually has nothing to do with that part, so you want to answer that one first?
Sure, so again, this, the geography of the city, it's only four square miles. And in the in the field training program, we we make sure that everybody understands and knows all the areas of the city before we put them out on patrol. And you're right, they're they're going to go and back people up in other areas. But the the main focus of the person that's going to be taking the complaints and really being the contact person in those runs as opposed to the backup person. It's going to be the person that's assigned to that area. So if there's a, let's just say there's an assault and an officer from area one goes. And then the backup comes from area two. Officer one area just wants to be taking the complaint, doing the majority of the things that need to be taken care of there. Based on the familiarity with the area, if you will.
Okay. Um, my second question is about so training along along the lines of the community policing. So I know that there was another program that our officers were going through where they were getting like mental health, first aid training and some other additional things from that program. Are there additional trainings that officers will have to receive along the lines of like how to properly like, you know, interact with the community? How to address, you know, certain situations that are coming up that might not necessarily necessarily be. Like, again, like policing, typical policing scenario, since they're going to be, you know, placed in an area, maybe sitting in cars, like you said, kind of observing what's going on in the area. Like, what are additional things that they will be learning, being trained on to move into this cop crew phase?
Right, so there's, there's a whole myriad of things. And I'm very familiar with what this, what this team is going to do because in my previous department, I ran that, actually, I started that unit in my previous department and was very effective. So there's a lot of different trains or some investigative skills that they're going to need to come up with. You know, we're going through a lot of our training right now. In fact, Lieutenant Anderson's conducting the fair and impartial policing training. It was at City Hall today with half the group. We just went through our police ethics training last month. And again, we'll be finishing up with that mental health training coming up in September. We should have already been done, but the COVID kind of got things complicated. So we have another seven officers going to the CIT training coming up in September. So we'll be done with that one mine campaign from IACP coming in September, which puts us about 14 months early. From what that program has a time limit on. So we're moving forward on all of those things.
Perfect, thank you. One last question. I'll let others. You talked about the cop crew attending like community events, community meetings. Is that going to be just that small cohort of individuals, like kind of rotating through different things? Or will that then trickle out into the officers who are maybe assigned to different zones? Being that they will have familiarity with maybe an activity that's happening in a particular ward, for instance?
Right, so we're going to encourage that. Obviously, the infusion of two people into the detective bureau to take those cases away from patrol officers is really an important piece. The classical structure should be 60% of your time is assigned, 40% should be free patrol time. I can tell you, I just got one of the reports, if I can find it real quick. Yeah, I don't know where it is right this second because I got my presentation spread out all over the place. But I can tell you that I think the most free patrol time on a particular shift was 8% and the others had less. So they're, they basically are working on investigations, running out, taking calls, doing what they need to do to take care of the call, coming back, working on investigations. So the free patrol time in those contacts just aren't happening because there's just no time. So by taking those investigations away, we're going to increase that free patrol time and they'll be able to do those things that you're talking.
Is that it? Mayor Pro Tim, okay. Anyone else?
I've got my hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
It's hard to see.
Okay, well, you're not on my screen, that's why.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, no, that's okay.
So maybe this might need to be like, well, I feel like it does need to be a separate like conversation, but I just wanted to touch on it a little bit. With the social worker aspect. Is there any like way to utilize the social worker, the hire in the community to kind of do some like preventative community? I guess policing?
You have to narrow that down for me a little bit.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm kind, I'm just trying, I'm just curious if there's like, is anything being discussed internally yet about the social worker? And and how that's going to play into community policing?
Right, so we're looking at that and so we've got some kind of a posting, but. At the limited resource that we have to. To engage a social worker, I'm not exactly sure what we're, what, how the, what the important pieces are going to be to make sure that we're hitting, we're getting the best bang for our buck.
Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Councilmember Morgan, your hands up? Yes, go ahead.
Let me unmute, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Chief, did you see? I have like a two minute, maybe a minute and a half rebuttal, so I'm gonna jump around a little bit, but there's things I want to say. Well, first, I think it's a misnomer that police are the ones that keep ordering communities. And I think it's also a misnomer that the community are not detectives or they're not, they don't have the tools to, to, I don't use the word police, but to shepherd. And supervise their own neighborhoods. And the last is, I think, of people in the communities, they know that there's consequences to patrolling and doing things that maybe the police are not subject to. I think those things need to be thrown out there. And secondly, just want to throw a few things with the nine principles that we talked about with Sir Robert Peel and the Pele principles with things like fairness, honesty, integrity, leadership, objectivity and so on. And my daughter won the baccalaureate and it was like 13 principles that they had to learn. And there's a way of measuring how fair, how just, how critical thinking they were, like the aptitude test that you mentioned. So these things are can be measured. And so when we're talking about 1829, a former prime minister of the UK leaving that as the standard of how we're going to police. Or at least an old model that needs to be updated. I think that's something that not troubles me, but it's something that I don't think in its inception. It definitely needs to be more diverse in how to, and how to make it bigger. And I think within the police department, I think the most solid and the most vulnerable part of any system are people. I think people are going to make it incredible or people are going to make it less valid by their actions. And we mentioned as far as the old way, we think about the number of arrests, the number of stops, the number of tickets. I think would it be better as far as to move ahead, I think you want to move ahead so far. But let's talk about the last 10 years. If we get into those meet of who were arrested, who got the most tickets? Who were like what the underserved had to get the short end of the stick of policing? Let's start there, let's start moving forward because we, unless we internalize and look at that data, it's hard to move forward. And I think what Gail had mentioned, again, I know you're going to present this to them, but when we think about community policing as a joint. I don't, I think, I look at police as the coaches, meaning this should be coaching, certainly liaisons in the community to do the work. As far as thinking that we're going to call somebody, whether it's a social worker or anybody to come respond and and do the work that. Maybe I'm sure it's people in the community that's not as trained as they should be. And I wanted to mention about safety, about the perception, the inner perception. And for some of the people who are most criminalized, most dehumanized, they don't even feel less safe than a lot of people who claim to feel unsafe. Based on not even having the experiences or evidence that they are interacting with police and the crime that police seem to be surveilling or looking for. So those, it's not as honest as we could get it. And lastly, what Ms. Desiree Simmons said as far as the goal of having a safety, healthy, community well being at the forefront. Because I think it's no offense to anybody, I do believe it's policing some folks and then policing other folks. And I think we have to be really clear, there's not an umbrella where policing just works for everybody the same way. Because I do think with a lot of the officers who have been. A part of murdering people have used that inherent learned response of being afraid for their life. So we need to do aptitude tests to determine if these people are even fit to serve in certain areas that they can police. So this is a lot, and I think the community, I mean, the commission has a lot to say on this. And I think the council has a lot to say, and I think citizens have a lot more to say. So as far as before we move forward, anything, I think we have to look at who has been getting done wrong. And not only have it how they've been getting done wrong, let's add it up, let's see if we can make better for them before we move. Because better for them is better for everybody, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morgan. Anyone, Councilmember Wilcox? Is your hand up?
Yeah, it was, I just unmuted, thanks. Thank you, Mary, thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I took this to be, when I first read this, I took this to be the starting of a conversation on that this was an administrative. Review between you and and the city manager. I look at this and and think, you know, and agree with the Council, Councilmember Morgan. That there have to be a lot more conversations going on and that we need to get more information. And if this is, we're talking about data driven, you know, Councilman Morgan is talking about the aptitude test and I'm talking about. You know, surveys that, you know, can be put in place to see, you know, you're talking about measuring the the feeling of safety. You know, that's a. There are surveys that are designed to do that, and I think we need to do that. I think the other steps coming from this will have to be getting, you know, city staff that are charged with community engagement. To bring that to bear and have certainly have more conversations with the with the police advisory commission. You know, when I read the first few slides, I was, I come from a quality background. And and when I think about, you know, measuring the effectiveness by the number of. Number of incidents just just seemed very strange to me. You know, the idea that if I were in charge of the quality of a set of products. And I measured my effectiveness by how many times they were non compliant and that how many things didn't meet the standard of. Say normality or and the good quality, that seems like a very strange metric. And I'm not sure how that has been so pervasive in a reactive mode. It just seems completely illogical to me that that would be there. And moving away from that and the measures that you've outlined is certainly a good thing, but I'm just, it just seems so strange. At this point that that would be an effective way of measuring efficacy. You know, I sure Desiree's point about, about, you know, with the detectives and in having people. You know, what are the safeguards in terms of having that become profiling as well? I mean, that, there's a history to that, and I'm not saying specific to this department, but that, you know, that is a prevalence in our culture. You know, if we're looking to stop crime, then who are we looking at to stop the crime? So I'm sorry, you're going to say something?
Yeah, so just on your first point, that has been very pervasive in law enforcement, going back a long time. And I'm not going to date myself how long I've been around, but I can tell you that that was, that was the measure. What's your, then they called it productivity. What is your productivity? What can you show? Because you can't, you can't talk about suppressing crime. How do you know whether a patrol suppressed crime or not? Because there's no way to measure a crime that didn't happen.
Right.
So these are easy measures, right? These are things that you can point to. He's a good cop because he goes out, he does his job, he works hard, he makes this many arrests, he just writes as many tickets, he has these many citizen contacts, he solved these many cases. Those, those were things that along the way became an easy measure of whether or not you were out there working hard or not.
Right, and I get that somebody could just drive around and not do anything and it would look like there was no crime. But you know, that that comes to bear in other metrics as well, so.
We can measure that by the calls that come in for crimes that are reported, not necessarily crimes that are discovered on patrol.
Right, right. I had another question.
And I'll tell you this, one of the reasons that that I would like to get away from that is because that goes directly to the Councilman Morgan's point. If I know that I'm going to be rated on how many arrests I make, where am I going to go? I'm going to go to the well, right? I'm going to concentrate my efforts on where I think I know I'm going to make the most arrests. Instead, is that fair? Is that the right way to police? I don't think it is. I mean, everybody knows where there's a cop that sits and hides on a highway somewhere, right? Because you've seen him that same place over and over and over again. He's going to the well because he knows he can write a ticket there, right? So we don't want to do that. We want to, if this is going to be community policing, it can't be driven on short sighted, directly focused goals of. I'm going to go out and make an arrest today and write two tickets. That's, that's not solving the community's problems and that's not making people safer. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to stop making arrests because that's not going to happen either. There are situations where, one, it's legally mandatory. You can't not make an arrest in a DV complaint. Domestic violence requires by statute that you're making arrests if you can decide, if you can decipher who the aggressor is. So we're going to still be making arrests and in some situations, though, absolutely appropriate action is to make an arrest, but not in every situation. So we want to start looking at how are we solving the problem? Again, like the transit center, they want people trespassing arrested for trespassing. So I'm going to arrest them, I'm going to bring the station, I'm going to book them, I'm going to release them, and they're going to be back at the transit center in five minutes. That didn't do anything but put somebody in the spin cycle of the criminal justice system. That doesn't solve that problem. We need to find a different solution to that problem. You can't arrest your way out of that.
Right, quota systems don't work in any situation in HR or or community safety. And I know that trapped very well in Romulus, so. The other, the other issue is, you know, there's been. You know, you were present at all the Black Lives Matters protests and marches and engaged with folks in the street and in front of the police station. With the questions and answers. Unfortunately, a lot of us couldn't hear those, but I know somewhat what those are, but you know. A large thrust at this point is to decrease the size of police forces and to have less police involvement. And this plan seems to be at odds with that. And that's why I'm thinking that more community input needs to happen because, you know, this looks like it's expanding the police force where others people are looking to decrease the size of it. And reallocate those funds to to other resources that can do with some of the problems that that don't necessarily require a police officer. So rather than training police officers to do those other jobs, having somebody who's actually trained in those come in and do that. And I, and I get the guardianship and the, and you know, there are instances where police are, you know, obviously necessary. And with the level of danger, that's, that's incredible. I have attended to a couple of meetings in which, you know, people were talking about alternatives and it was a community. You know, meeting in a park where where people were talking about alternatives to calling the police and thinking of ways, and I thought that was great. So I'd like to see a lot more of that in terms of education of communities. And as Mr. Morgan was saying, safety isn't coming from from the police being there so much as that the the community gets together and decides that they're, you know, how they're going to interact and keep the community safe. And I'll just end at that, so thank you.
Well, I just want to make clear that we're not adding any officers to do this. Okay, this is not an expansion of the police department. This is a rearrangement of the police department. So I want to make that perfectly clear, we're not adding anything. And as far as defunding the police department, this police firm's been defunded for a long time.
I get that.
We had, just going back to 2000, we had 40 officers and we're at 31 now, and we've been fighting our way back. If you want to go back further than that, there were 58 officers here in the late 90s. So this, this department's been defunded for forever. So I mean, I can appreciate the conversations, but even even with having people do other things that we do. There, there's not much, there's, there's not much fat to cut off the meat here.
Right, and I bring that up so that that will be addressed. I mean, in terms of that, that dynamic, in terms of the public, public outcry for this to happen and what your reality is and what it has been in the city of Gibson.
Is that it, Councilmember Wilcox?
Yeah, sorry to be so long winded, but.
Well, no, that's okay. I mean, this is what the meeting's for, Councilmember Morgan and then Councilmember Brown.
This is just a more of a comment or just a food for thought. But I think the principles are only as credible as the systems that can enforce and uphold them. So the question is, when you think about the number of arrests or the numbers of tickets or the differences in how they're treated. When you think about the nine principles of accountability, fairness, honesty, integrity, leadership, objectiveness. So it's clear by the numbers that these principles don't exist. Now, the American government has a standard of measure about how to determine if countries are democratic. And when they put our own system up against their standard measure, we fail miserably. But at least we have to at least acknowledge that that's where it is. And so when we're thinking about these principles. And so when we're thinking about these principles, the numbers show that this is not where we are. So we have to own that and say, we're looking to move toward this, but we have, it's only, it's data-driven. That's all, so I just wanted to know that. So if principles are only credible enough to uphold and enforce these, we need to enforce them. So clearly, those nine principles haven't been enforced by the numbers. So that's what I'm trying to look at, how we can rearrange that. But Tony, I really appreciate the restructuring. And I'm hearing what you're saying. It's not adding, it's not taking away, it's restructuring. So that's commendable. Thank you so much.
And I absolutely understand your point. And there are a lot of different things that we need to look at in our entire criminal justice system. Not just policing. We need to look at probation, incarceration, parole, you know, some of the things that go on. And quite frankly, I've been in this job a long time and I'm learning things all the time. You know, our returning citizens might not, for the most part, might not even decide to return them because you're giving them zero chance to succeed. So, you know, there's a lot of things that need to be addressed.
Councilmember Brown. I'm sorry, Mayor Pro temp Brown. Were you through, Councilmember Morgan? Mayor Pro temp Brown.
Thank you. My only other question would be around when it's time to start the rolling out process. Have you thought about how this is going to be communicated to the community? How it's going to be introduced to the community? Are you thinking of involving the Police Advisory Commission and kind of figuring out how to kind of get the information out about the fact that we have this restructuring of the police department?
Right. So, yes, yes, and yes, I guess. That one of the main functions of the Police Advisory Commission is to be a liaison between the community and the police department. So, yeah, we, part of our plan is just the yes to use them extensively to pass the word. And we'll use our other normal channels. We'll put it on the Facebook page. Excuse me, we'll use the city's website. And some of it will just end up being word of mouth because we're going to just start showing up to things that we just don't. Normally, people see me at a lot of things, right? So they're going to see me and other people too. Or maybe just other people and not me. You know, depending on the situation or what it is. You know, sometimes when you go somewhere and people are very familiar with you, they just gravitate to you and they don't talk to the new person, right? So maybe I'll step back for a minute and let other people assume that position or that role so that they're kind of forced to gravitate to each other. Maybe that's not a great way to put it, but if they need to talk to somebody and that's the only person there to talk to, I guess they'll talk to them.
Are you done, Mayor Pro temp?
Yes, yes, that's all, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Simmons, did you have anything you wanted to add to the conversation?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm glad to see that we're looking at some, you know, neat strategies and positive changes. And as someone who used to do community-oriented policing, you know, I think it does add value. And, you know, I'm just looking forward to how we move forward. So looking forward to the work ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Somerville.
Yeah, can you hear me okay? Okay. I guess one of the things, like, just given all the conversations around, like, some of the, some of the processes that we already have implemented, but also just like, I get that, like, our budgets have been cut over a number of years and so we have a smaller police department. But in terms of community policing, and we're talking about having officers going into new places and spaces where you typically might not see police officers, I guess I'm just wondering, like, how we navigate? Like, there are people who just don't feel comfortable in situations around police and as soon as they see the car or the uniform, like, that freaks them, that's scary for them for a number of reasons. So I'm just kind of, you know, like, where's the conversation around, like, that part of it? Because, like, community policing, you have, you know, the police and the members of that community and you're going into a space and trying to, in a lot of ways, get to know and socialize and so that there's some comfortability there for folks. But at the same time, you have people who are just terrified. So, I guess, like, how are we navigating that as a department?
So, again, the non-law enforcement contacts are the key to that piece. So if you're at a picnic and a police officer shows up, you may be a little uncomfortable because the police officer's there, but we're there to break that ice, right? This, we're not there, we're trying to change the paradigm a little bit. Because people don't call us up and say, hey, why don't you come over and have a cup of coffee? We really don't have anything going on today. They usually call us when they're having the worst day of their life. So instead of always interacting with people in that vein, we want to interact with people during the other parts of our life that are okay. So if they're at Big B's and we sit down and have a cup of coffee with them, or we go to their community meeting and afterwards we sit and talk about the football game, or we see them in the park, or we see them just walking down the street and we just say, hey, or go get an ice cream at Dairy Queen and talk to the people in line. Those are the, those non-law enforcement contacts that are going to break those things down. Right now, we don't have that. We have, you called, we come, we try and solve your problem in 15 minutes or less because we have another call waiting and we take off. And then we try and investigate your case the best we can and hopefully the results are good. We don't want to do that anymore. Okay, there's a better way to do it. And now we have the minimum amount of numbers that we think we can get away with to move to something like that, what we're talking about here. We want to provide a better service. That's why we're here. If we're not trying to improve and make things better for the community, we might as well just shut the doors. So this is our first steps. There's a lot of things, and I noticed Ray had a whole litany of things, and I'll go back and I'll listen to it because this is a recorded meeting. And some of that stuff was really good and I didn't have a chance to write it all down. But this is, this is the start, okay? We need to take a first step at some point. And if we just sit there and wait until it's the right time or we have the right situation or the right number of people, we're never going to do it. So we want to take the leap, we want to do it now, we want to get started. Like I said, it's a phased-in approach. It won't happen overnight, but if we don't get started, it will never happen.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, I want to say thank you, Chief. I know you've probably got tired of me sounding like a broken record, but sometimes the broken record finally gets through or there's a response to it. So, and this is, I agree with you that this is a first step and I really, really appreciate us taking this first step. And to Desiree and to all of the people, the councilmembers that, you know, saw things that needed to be worked on in this plan, yes. But it is a first step. And if we don't ever take a first step, we'll never get to where we want to go. So I commend you, I thank you for putting, pulling this together. And no, it's not by far, by far, by any means, complete. It is a first step. And one of the things, I'm not sure exactly who mentioned it, but one of the things that I do believe that we need to, will have to work on is actually some community meetings, I think, with the community to talk about it, to review this plan. There'll be others that will come to the Police Commission meeting on Thursday night that will hear this plan and that we can begin to plan some community education, some community and get some community input. Not just educating the community, but getting some input from them. So that's a back and forth thing within complete and continuing to develop this program. But again, I say thank you. I look forward to working with you on this. I look forward that all of council will work with you and that the community also, that we can really truly work together and come to a place that we will have a police department working within a community that we would be the, that we would be, people would come to us to see how it's done and say, how'd you do it? And we would be able to answer them and be able to help them move forward in their, in their plans and their programs. So thank you for this first step and I look forward to us going further, a lot further. So, but thank you.
Well, thank you all. And again, if you have comments, suggestions, my email, everyone has it, feel free to use it. Anybody that's on the call that isn't part of the the group that can speak, if you have ideas, suggestions, comments, tdujusty@cityofypsilanti.com, please feel free or just give me a call at the station. I'm here a lot.
Okay, thank you. And please, those that are in the audience, accept that invitation to reach out to him with your ideas and your suggestions because it's called community policing. So we have, we need the community's input also. Well, thank you. Clerk Halinga, next on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is the Municipal Employee Retirement Systems Michigan Presentation. I believe Sue is here to discuss.
Sue, before you go through, good evening, council. I just wanted to give a brief overview. So currently, the system has two pension systems, one for our general retirees and one for our fire and police pension. And our general retirees is under, currently administered by MERS, which is the Michigan Employees Retirement System. And annually, they provide us an actuarial valuation. And we have here Ms. Sue from the regional manager from MERS to present us this actuarial valuation. So Sue, you can go ahead.
Well, thank you for having me and good evening, everyone. I will try and keep this short. So feel free to ask questions as I go along. I'm just going to give you some highlights. I don't know how weedy you want to get because these reports can get very weedy, so I'm going to keep a high level. And again, just let me know if you have any questions. So if you're not familiar with the Municipal Employees Retirement System, we administer pension plans for governmental entities in the state of Michigan. So we currently administer pension plans for around 850 municipalities in the state of Michigan. And we are a not-for-profit that is governed by an independent board. And I have been with MERS for 14 and a half, 15 and a half years and I cover southeast Michigan. So I've covered the city of Ypsilanti for quite a while. And I applaud the city because they've done a very nice job of funding their pension system that's through us. The current funding level on the plan is 122%, which obviously is amazing. We have, I think, only 70 groups in the, in our system that are over 100% funded. One thing I did want to address just right out of the gate, if you noticed, your funding level did go down. I just wanted to let you know that MERS does an experience study every five years. The funding level drop was in part due to MERS making some adjustments due to that five-year experience study where the actuaries actually go out and look at the actual experience in the plan, benchmark it against other public plans across the country and within the state, all the plans within the state to see if we're still using the correct assumptions. After our most latest five-year experience study, the board made, or the actuaries made a recommendation to the board to lower our rate of return assumption from 7.75 to 7.35. So you're going to see that in this valuation and that was impactful in your funding, overall funding level. So we did reduce that. The other piece of that is we did update our mortality table and we show that on the budget page in here. But that is something that will be impactful for your following year. It'll be in your 2022 rates. And it's just really an effective way of changing the mortality tables into a different, it's a banding, so you're banding different generations and such. So hopefully, by going to the generational table with the banding, we won't have to make such adjustments on a going-forward basis with the mortality table. So we've got both of those things going on. Any gains or loss in the market is smoothed over five years, so you're still feeling some bumps in the market. Last year was a good year. I think we finished around 14.5%. But again, any gain, any loss is spread over five years. So we're still feeling some downturns in that. Overall, I, you know, I have to say that I think the plan is doing very well because you're also what our actuaries consider a very mature plan, which means that you actually have more retirees in your plan than you have actives. Normally, what we see is when there's that imbalance, it's a little bit harder for them to keep their funding levels up because currently you have 39 actives in the plan, 19 former vested members who are people that have vested, but they're not eligible to collect yet. And then you have 52 retirees and/or their beneficiaries that are currently collecting in the plan. And so you're doing very well for that, that balance. And if you have the actuary in front of you, I just want to point you to one table that I think is very, very easy to follow as far as the flow of assets in and out of your plan. So if you take a look at page 15, which is Table 5, this gives you a 10-year look back. So this is going to give you quickly that the bar column on your left, that's the minimum requirement.
Excuse me a moment, Sue. Andrew, could you show, share that, please?
You said, what page was that on, 15?
Yes.
It's on page 38 of the actual slide.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so it's a 10-year look. So it starts in 2009, goes to your most current year, which is 2019. This valuation covers, so that bottom line, if we go across that first column, that required amount, that is what we built the city, that's the minimum requirement that we were billing the city for, which is the normal cost for all of the actives earning another year of service credit. The employee contributions was at just over $100,000. The investment income, that $912,000, that's the interest that you earned on your asset balance, which was just over $19 million at the end of 2019. So benefit payments going out was $1 million. The employee refunds was $7,000. That's just employees that were in your plan, terminated and took their employee contributions with them, forfeiting any future benefit. I think something that's important to point out is due to your plan being so well-funded and the money that you're making, you know, in the interest, if you take the column with the valuation assets and you look at how much is going out, you're almost covering on an annual basis your required retirement payments. And that's really how a well-funded defined benefit plan works. Your money is in there and it's working for you and that's really exactly what your plan is doing. You're making enough on your assets that you're almost covering what that liability is that's going out on an annual basis. Questions? On the plan?
Okay, help me understand, Sue, please. Okay, you say the investment income, the valuation assets is 912,000, but then the valuation asset balance is 19, 19 million? Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, but you were mentioning that there was almost a balance, I mean, between the two. How is that?
That 912, 100, that's in the middle column under the investment income, that's just your earnings. That's simply your earnings. I'm sorry, I probably didn't use the right word for that. So that's your earnings, that's your investment earnings that you made on 19 million. So that's your money in there working for you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I know in the interest of time, I hate to drag through some of these other things, so I'm just, I'm wondering if there's anything. There's really nothing that has changed drastically. You haven't changed any of your plan provisions. If we go to the very last page in this report, it gives you your whole historical look at the plan, which I also think is a really nice piece of history. So, yep, on my page, it's thirty-four, keep going. Very, go all the way to the end, there you go. Yep, that starts it, so that is, gives you by division. It breaks it down from the time the city joined MERS, which was in 1946, was actually when the state of Michigan formed the pension plan. We separated from the state to become independent in 1996, but you have been, and you are like a charter member of the plan. So back then, it shows you what provisions the city set up when they first came into MERS. And then you can see, like gradually over time, you know, they were enhancing the benefits, you know, and did some different things, changed employee contributions, kept increasing the multiplier over time. So, I mean, just looking at your history and the fact that you are so well-funded, again, you know, the city has done, done a really good job, because this isn't the norm. There's a couple divisions, like your city manager division is closed, so many city managers will go into the defined contribution plan. But other than that, that's a great historical look, and I know our acronyms are a little hard to understand. So when you see something like a B, you know, B3, that's actually a 2.25% multiplier, and then you see, like on some of these, that it's a two-point, or a B4, that's a 2.5% multiplier. So there were actually planned enhancements, and also some temporary windows that were opened up, which is an opportunity to give employees an incentive to retire earlier than they normally would have been eligible. So you offered an enhanced multiplier within a short window of time, so that these, you know, group of employees would possibly take advantage of it and retire out earlier than they normally would have been able to, and those are costly changes. When you do things like that, it does definitely create a liability in the plan. So again, I think you're in a, you're in a really good place, most people would love to be in the position the city's in with their plan.
Sue, can I ask a question? Thank you so much for the presentation, um, I'm sorry, mayor, I, I'll wait for you to call on me, I have.
No, you're, no, you're good, I didn't see your hand.
This is a very simple question, because there's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of, they could say, a lot of different acronyms and things. So we're paying right now, at this 122% ability to fund this, we're paying mostly for retirees, is that correct?
Well, you're paying, you've still got a lot of actives in your plan, because you still have thirty-nine actives, so you're still paying the normal cost of those employees accruing one more year of service, because your liability goes up every year, that you still have people in the plan, because the liability of what the benefits that they are earning is going to be. And so you're still paying that normal cost of those employees earning, the active employees earning another year of service credit, so you're really not paying towards the retirees, you're paying out at the, you know, I mean, all throughout the year, you're paying out for them, but what you're paying into our plan.
How many retirees are we paying for?
Fifty-two.
And that's more than thirty-nine than the active ones, correct?
Yes, that's why I'm saying that you're doing really well, because normally, when you have that imbalance, and you have that many more retirees to act.
So my question is, if that was flipped, if it was fifty, if it was flipped, and we had fifty, if we had fifty-nine new, young, active people, and we had thirty retirees, would that flip that 122% based on what we're configuring to put in the plan?
Oh, that's a great question, what it would change is it would change, you would have, you'd be paying in more for your normal cost, because you'd have more employees, so that cost would be greater, however, you'd be paying out less, because you wouldn't have as many retirees collecting a benefit. So it's a really good question, and not being an actuary myself, I can't give you an idea, I can just tell you that it definitely would change the dynamics, because you would be paying more normal costs, but less on the, you know.
And the last question, are we paying, were we paying out for the retirees for their, their natural life until?
Yes, sir. Yes, and then the average age, just to give you an idea, let me look on here, the average age of your retirees.
Our healthy, healthy, healthy retirees.
Yes, young.
Yeah, mercy.
Idol retirees, okay, so the average age of your retiree, you know, as a group, that is seventy-two years old.
Wish them long life.
Long lives.
Yes, long lives, okay, cool, thank you so much for that.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to add too, is for our non-union employees, we've already closed the plan for the defined benefit, so that will also have an effect, if we hire new people under the non-union plan, then they'll be in the defined contribution, so I think there will be an effect when it comes to the funding, that that will be required in the future.
Okay, so say that again, so I can hear it, I was trying to find you, okay.
Yeah, so, so currently, what we did was, we've already closed, I mean, for our, every non-union employee that we hire now, we are no longer offering the defined benefit plan, they will just be under the defined contribution, which is in effect, a little bit cheaper, I believe, with the defined benefit. Is that?
So that's cheaper for the city?
Yes, mayor.
Reagan, can I ask you when you made that change?
Probably Kim, Kim will be able to.
Was it this, was it in 2020 or 2019?
I, I think somewhere 2019, or yeah, 2019.
Okay, I think we should probably have a conversation in the next couple of days, because if it was in 2019, it would be reflected in this actuarial valuation, and it's not, because we still show the division open, so we're gonna need to, to get that changed, so that the actuaries will start capturing the fact that there won't be anybody going in that division.
Okay.
Okay? I'll make a note.
Okay, are there any other questions for Sue?
Also, I have another question, mayor.
Yes.
Sue, can we just go to Table Seven? Which is page, I think, page forty-one?
Table Seven.
Andrew, can we go to page forty-one?
Yep, I'm on Table Seven.
Okay.
So let me guess, your question is, why has our funding level went down over the years?
Yes.
Well, that's a really good question, and I can tell you that over the years, you know, we evaluate and we look at how we build things, and when plans historically were overfunded, what wound up happening was the actuaries would take those credits, and so they would apply the credits that you had in the overfunding level towards the required contributions, hence resulting, a lot of times, in there not being any cost for you to pay, simply because you were so well, you know, you were so well-funded. With that overfunded status, what winds up happening is you get a reprieve from making contributions, however, that credit is just slowly being used up every year. And so what we started to do now is we've started to, even if a plan is overfunded, we are still billing a normal cost for the plan, so that plans don't fall below 100%, because we've had, you know, plans, it's not the goal, you know, they want to stay over 100% funded, and by using that overfunded credit, you know, to, you know, make contributions, it does wind up eating away at the credit, and so that's what was happening over the years, because you were so well-funded. But we have changed that, so that you are now making normal cost payments.
Are you, was that, were we being penalized for being overfunded?
Nope, we were just using your credit, so that you didn't have to make more payments, because you were so overfunded, that the normal cost of all your employees, we were just using the credit that you already had, because you were so far overfunded, that, you know, to continue to bill you when you're already funded it way past, you know, what we normally see, they just, they just use that every year. You just got the benefit of, you know, you're using your own money, you just don't have to make contributions. Does that answer your question?
But does that put us in danger of being, reaching a point where we're, we become underfunded?
You know, I, I don't see that, if you look, there's a table on page, it's a graph, and it's right under your budgeting, if you look at, it's page seven in the actuarial evaluation, it's not a table, it's two charts, graphs. Yep, right there. So this shows you a trajectory of going forward, okay? So you can see, and this is just projecting, so that top one, when you're looking at your funding percentage, I would use the little orange lines, you know, you're gonna see your funding level go up, and it's gonna, you know, even after twenty, yes, you are 100% funded again, oh, you're, you're never gonna drop, you'll just, you're gonna continue to go back up. So to answer your question, no, I do not see your plan in jeopardy at all, dropping in a funding level. You know, the things that are most impactful are, you know, when we do make adjustments, I'm not gonna say that we're not gonna make any more adjustments to the rate of return assumption, you know, it's something that they look at on an annual basis. Having made this one, you know, I, I know that they look at it every year, it's gonna depend on the market going forward, you know, what they project, and what they're comfortable, that we can actually earn on an annual basis, and so, I mean, those kinds of adjustments, maybe you might feel a little bit of a downturn, if, you know, we notch at those again, but you're still gonna be headed back up in the right direction.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
It just, it appears that since 2005, like we literally have never been under 120% funded, we've always been overfunded, according to, so we started from 156%, now down to 122%, started at 5.7 million overfunded, now we had three, so they're using those monies. But I'm saying, how we keep dropping percentages, like since 2005, we're like 34% under from where we were.
Because we were, we were using those credits.
I get it, and those credits are for, how many specific bills, or what do we owe, how many credit, like, what, what are, how many different balances do we have for those credits to be used toward?
It would be your contributions every month on, you know, an annual basis.
How much is that, how much is that monthly on an annual basis?
I have no idea, you know, I could do some, I could do some checking right off the top of my head, you know, I have to go back and look at all of your other actuarial valuations to see, you know, what the cost was on an annual basis.
I just wanna know, if you can, if you can get that to the city, just how many, when you say there are credits, what the credits are going to annually, so the monthly and the annually, those should add up to a certain number, and if that's the only thing, that's cool, but what other things are we using those credits toward? Thank you so much, Sue, for your presentation.
You got it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Wilcoxen? No, okay.
No, I was, I read through this a couple of times before it kind of all made sense, and got the balance of what was going on, so.
All right, thank you. Simmons, Brown, Somerville, any questions or comments? Okay, well, don't see any, so Sue, thank you so very much for coming, and thank you for a
Thank you, Sue.
good presentation, appreciate you.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
And I will be in touch with Reagan in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stay safe and stay well.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you. All right. And Clerk Halinga, next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is first reading of an ordinance. It's all by the Council of the City of Ipsalany, that an ordinance entitled An Ordnance to amend Ordnance 1295 to provide for two youth members on the Ipsalany Police Advisory Commission be approved on first reading.
Do we have a motion?
I'm moved. For.
Okay, supported by, I mean, moved by Mayor Paul Tim Brown and supported, did I hear? Okay, and I saw Councilmember Wilcoxen pan.
Yeah, I'm muted, yeah.
Anthony was trying to get unmuted, too.
Okay, all right, so it's moved in second, is there any discussion, comments? Yes, Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Sorry, Anthony, no, it just seems like this is the first, and there were a couple of other things that we, we passed last time, but this, this is, seems fairly straightforward, in that we talked about adding two youth members to all the commissions, so. That was all, sorry, Anthony.
Don't be sorry, the only thing I would like to add is, I appreciate us adding two seats, but if we could somehow add the interest into the two seats, because having two seats, they're empty, won't be useful. I hope we can lure, or at least pleasantly coerce young folks to want to serve.
I hope so, too, because there's no point in having the seats if they're sitting there empty, so I do hope we get some, some young people. Any other questions, comments?
Need to open the public hearing, mayor.
All right, that's where I was going, public hearing is now open.
I don't currently see anyone's hand up, too, so there we are. Lamar Weir has their hand up, I'm gonna allow them to speak now.
Just a quick question, for those two youth seats, was that just for the Police Advisory Commission, or was that for all the commissions?
If I could remember correctly, it was for, there are two, we have two commissions that do not allow for students to be on them, and, but all of the others, we were changing it to two. Or I think the others had to, and we were adding another one to the police commission, so that that one would have to also.
If I may add, mayor, the Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning Commission by statute do not allow youth membership, and then the HTC, I reviewed the enabling legislation for that, and the requirements for members would be prohibitive to youth membership.
Okay, so we have three commissions that will not have youth membership, but the other commissions will, once this ordinance is passed, each other, the other commissions will have two.
There, there is one other, the Board of Ethics, as set for it does, it does list the, that there are only five members allowed, and it doesn't allow for youth membership.
Right, okay.
This would be the last, the last body that is liable to have two members.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilcoxen, was your hand up?
No.
No, okay, all right, any comments? Any questions? Okay, any more public comment?
I do not see anyone else's hands up, mayor.
Okay, if there's no more public and no more council comments or questions, would you call the roll, please?
We need a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'm moved.
Okay, it's been moved in second to close the public hearing, is that a voice vote or a roll call?
That'll be a roll call vote, mayor.
Okay.
Councilmember Somerville? Councilmember Somerville? Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
With six yes votes, the motion carries. Mayor, you're muted.
All right, now we're ready for the motion on the ordinance, so. Any questions or comments from council? If not, Clerk Halanga, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes votes.
All right, thank you. What was that?
Nothing, just being.
It's the.
Okay. Next item?
Next item will be Resolution Number 2020-154A. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the premium for the property and liability insurance renewal for the City of Ypsilanti effective August 1st, 2020 through 2021, with the Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool be approved in the amount of $375,860. Be it further resolved that the city manager is authorized to sign and approve payment of the invoice.
There a motion, a second?
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported by, moved by Councilmember Morgan and supported by Mayor Pro Tim Brown. Okay, and so now are we going to have a presentation from, from Judy Thompson? To the, towards the end?
Judy from MML is here for any questions that council might have about the policy?
Okay, but she's not going to do a presentation?
No, it's just, it's a standard renewal. There, she could go over some changes if council wishes, but mostly she's here to ask, answer any questions that council may have about the policy.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing none, would you call the roll, please, Clerk?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
With six yes votes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for allowing me to listen in.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, sorry.
I didn't get a chance to see you, but it's nice to hear your voice.
Thank you.
Stay safe and stay well.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2020-150. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the minutes of July 7, 2020 be approved.
So move.
Second.
Get moving.
It's been properly moved by Councilmember Morgan and second by Councilmember Wilcoxen. Would you call the roll, please? Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, would you call the roll, please, Clerk Halanga?
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the application and process for the vacancy of Ward One. Resolution Number 2020-151. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas there is a vacancy for council member in Ward One, and whereas per Section 2.05D3 of the City Charter requires that a council member to represent Ward One be appointed on or before the third regular council meeting following the vacancy. Now therefore be it resolved that the council approve the application and application process for the Ward One vacancy.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved in second. Moved by Councilmember Morgan, second by Mayor Pro Tim Brown. Questions, discussion? Councilmember Morgan?
Is this the second meeting since the vacancy? Does that mean?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the next meeting, our first meeting in August, that's the time we're going, so we're going to spin from today filing or filling applications or whatnot.
The next regular meeting for council is August 18th. So there is additional time based off the primary election falling on August 4th.
Nice.
As set forth in the process and schedule, the applications will be posted tomorrow. The interviews for the vacancy will be held on August 11th. And then council can deliberate, either appoint someone on that night or they can wait to do so on the 18th.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
I just want to comment on how strange this timing is. In that, you know, when the mayor resigned and Mayor Pro Tim became mayor, we were just over a hundred days or so and, and to have somebody go through this whole process to be appointed for now less than ninety days. I'm kind of curious about who's, who's going to set up for that, because they, they can't be reelected to the position because we've already passed all those deadlines, so. I think this is going to take a, a unique person that's willing to, to step up for two and a half months. Just, I strikes me, it's, it's a peculiar situation, so.
Yes, it is, and what Seto's saying, timing is everything, so. We're seeing how timing is working. Any other, Councilmember Morgan?
I would say this, in ninety days, a good person can do something really wonderful and a not-so-good person can really not do some good things, so ninety days is, we're definitely, um.
There's a lot of time.
Yes, it is, to do good and bad work, so let's hope we all come together in consensus and bring the best recruit to the team.
All right. Any other comments? Questions? Council, I mean, Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
I just want to make sure that I heard Clerk Halanga correctly. We will appoint the person by, on the August 18th meeting and we'll have a special meeting on the 11th to do the interview.
That's correct.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
But you also said that there's a chance we could appoint them the night of the interview.
Yeah, that is, if, if council wishes, i- i- it, council has the authority to do that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have one question, again, sorry. Only because I, I was, you know, the most recent person appointed. The part is like.
Just a moment, just a moment. We're passing the nine o'clock hour for all of those that were taking bets on when the meeting would be over. So go ahead.
Um, no, so the part, like, so the mayor will come up with questions for the candidates and then they can't.
Two questions.
Yes, all of council submits two questions and then.
Okay, well then, maybe I read that wrong earlier.
Choose one that we will ask to every candidate during.
Okay, um. Maybe I was doing something wrong earlier and then I thought it said that the candidates the candidates will be informed of interview questions before the interview. That's in there? Is that, is that actually a part of the process?
I believe, yes, the candidates are given the questions.
Yeah, that, that's only weird. Yeah, that's only weird because, yeah, that didn't happen when I got, I, I was just curious if that's always been a policy. It's fine, like, I guess I don't care.
We can remove that section if.
Yeah, we didn't do that the last.
Yeah, we didn't do that for me, either.
Yeah, I'm not saying, like, we shouldn't do it just because I didn't have that luxury. I'm just, like, wondering, like, you know.
I had to suffer, so you have to suffer.
No, and that's why I don't want it to come off that way. I'm just curious, like, was that an oversight last time or, like, is it? Because I, I think it's a good idea, like, it, it makes interviews go better, so I think, but, you know, whatever, whatever everyone else wants to do. I just saw, I caught that when I was looking through this and I was a little curious.
So we're talking about the appointment process, then? Is, is it uniformed, is what we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we would have to look at the five appointments before these two got on here and if they asked questions, we might be adding something or taking something out. It still could be valid and finding out the best candidate. I'll vote for either or.
Yeah, it says here that the candidates will get the questions the day, the night before, like, well, the afternoon before. I'm not opposed to that, but we definitely have not done that in the past.
Yeah, we should just take it out.
I'm all about uniforming. Best is involved in me.
What was that?
Clerk Halanga, can you? Can you go back to the others that we appointed? They were within the last council session, be, before Councilmember Wilcoxen and Councilmember Somerville?
That would have been in.
That was Councilmember, and, and Brown.
Councilmember, and Brown. I mean, I, I, I can review those, those minutes, but I'm, I'm not entirely sure if they were provided the questions or not.
Okay. I can't re, I just can't remember and I'm, I'm okay either way.
Can we make a vote, can we make a vote now whether it's okay or not? We can just.
We sure can if you want to.
I make a motion that we make a vote to determine if the questions are allowable or not.
You have to make it specific in terms of taking it off or not.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I make a motion to, okay, I don't want to make, I, I strike that from the record.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Council, Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
I move that we remove providing the candidates with the questions prior to the interview.
I second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Brown, second by Councilmember Wilcoxen, that the phrase will be removed, that the candidates will receive the questions before the interview. It's been moved in second. Is there, is there any discussion?
So my only question is, do we want the element of surprise? Or do we want them to be thoughtful? Thoughtful and considerate in the answer that we're taking time to reflect on.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
I could, I would, my personal response to that would be, although I do understand, like I said, I wouldn't, I'm not opposed to giving the questions ahead of time, but particularly in this role, I think that for the most part, our questions are typically very similar. We ask about the same types of things about the role. And I would hope that anyone who is applying, even if it's for this short stint or for longer, that they would have been kind of keeping up with what we've been talking about, what we've been working on, especially in this short window if they're coming in to make this amazing change in ninety days that you were talking about. So, I, it's not necessarily about the element of surprise, but also about not getting the person's representative with prepared answers and really the knowledge base of, like, what we, what we're working on, what we're doing.
I concur.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Simmons?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, again, this could go either way. I think, you know, if somebody's interested in this, I would do my homework and look at the past couple of times we've done it, as Mayor Pro Tim Brown mentioned, I mean, our questions probably likely won't be very different, so. You know, again, I, I could go either way. I don't think it's really going to have a huge impact on, on things, whether the person has the questions in advance or, or not, so.
Okay. Councilmember Wilcoxen?
No, I'm good. I, I, I think it, it speaks to extemporaneous speaking and thinking on your feet.
Okay. All right. Clerk Halanga? Would you call the roll, please?
This is the, the rule on the amendment. Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes votes.
All right, thank you. Now, the most, the vote on the full original, I mean, I mean, resolution?
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes votes.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Brown, would you take the meeting for just a moment? I need to turn on some lights.
Sure. All right, so we are moving on to our next resolution, 2020-152. Approving the contract between the Fire and Police Pension Board and the City of Ypsilanti. Clerk Halanga, could you please read the resolution?
Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the Finance Department of the City of Ypsilanti serves as an independent contractor of the Ypsilanti Fire and Police Pension Board who performs administrative services on behalf of the board. And whereas the services shall be performed at One South Huron, Ypsilanti, Michigan, or as otherwise determined by mutual agreement of parties. And whereas the contract is effective for a term commencing on July 1st, 2020, and shall continue until terminated as provided herein. Whereas the board agrees to pay the city $30,140.06 for services performed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council will approve the contract for the Fire and Police Pension Administrative Contract this, this 2020, 2021.
I assume.
Support.
You're muted.
Sorry, it's moved by Councilmember Wilcoxen and supported by Councilmember Morgan. Clerk Halanga, is there staff that's going to give us any type of presentation on this?
Reagan.
Well, I think council, this is just a renewal of our contract with the board, so not much of a presentation.
Any questions, Council? Councilmember Morgan?
Um, I just have one question, Reagan. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Where it says the contract is effective for a term commencing on July 1st, 2020 and shall continue until terminated as provided herein, is that a open-ended, what does that mean?
What we do usually is we renew it every year. So like, we bring it to the city council every year.
So why is there no end date on it, though? It says it should continue until terminated. That means this, it means this concurrent until we make a decision to not.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
And so, and it said the board agrees to pay $30,000 for services performed, so that $30,000 is for the annual year, so you're paying $30,000 per year?
Yes, they, they do pay us the thirty, around $30,000, so we calculate every year, recalculate, that's why we bring it on a yearly basis, because sometimes there are costs, added costs to our services.
So I, I get it, so it doesn't say the services you provide, it just says that, this says the cost and it says an uncertain amount of time. That says a concurrent contract and it doesn't say what services are being utilized. I mean, I do know that, it says, basically, are you mediating for fire and police to, for the contracts? So you're doing contract, contractual work for them?
Yes, what we do is we provide the benefits administration for the board.
We also prepare the budget and.
Okay, it just said for duties performed, services, I just, I just assumed it was some of those things. But yeah, I just wanted to know, um, I would, I would feel good if there was a, maybe every five years, if there was a date on that, like, maybe July 1st, 2020 to 2025, and after five years we visit, but if it's concurrent until we decide to, that means we have to find, find ground or cause for it to not continue. And so, I don't want to be a detective. Thank you.
Just want to, okay, Councilmember Wilcoxen?
I'm, I'm going to propose an amendment. I'm, I'm gonna propose an amendment to this to, to address Councilmember Morgan's issues. Um, I don't know how we've done this in the past, I've, I've forgotten how we did this in the past, but I know it's a recurring thing. So, I move that, uh, we change the, this from, uh, continue until terminated as provided herein to until June 30th of 2021.
Okay. Is, uh, Council, I mean, uh, Clerk Colanga has his hand up before I ask for a second for your motion.
All right.
Mayor, if I, if I could, the, the, now therefore be it resolved, is, it, it does indicate that the contract is for fiscal year 2020, 2021, which would expire on June 30th, 2020, or 2021, rather.
All right, thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
I see the contract with the dash in there. Thank you, I'm sorry, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, uh, before we, uh, for a call for a, a motion, I mean, for a call for the vote, um, Chief Hobbs, did you have any, um, thing to add to the, um, discussion, the presentation, or?
I, I stay muted all the time. No, ma'am, nothing on, on the pension board.
Okay, is, uh, Chief Degusti still on here? He, does he have anything? Chief Degusti, did you have anything?
No, nothing about the pension board. That's, that's outside of our purview, I think.
All right, thank you. All right, um, well, if there's no other, uh, discussion or comments, Clerk Colanga, would you call the, uh, roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
With six yes votes, the motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Moving right along.
The next, uh, resolution is a contract with, uh, uh, for HBA, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti signed a dispatch agreement on behalf of the fire department with Emergency Health Partners, EHP, effective July 1st, 2017. The city of Ypsilanti properly budgeted costs through fiscal year 2021 at a monthly estimate of $3,043.86, or an annual fee of $36,526.28. And whereas on July 7th, 2020, the fire department received communication that beginning September 1st, 2020, the monthly cost will increase by 5%, i.e. 18.76% per dispatch. As a result, there will be an increase of $415.77 a month. The monthly fee will be $3,459.65, or a 10-month total of $34,596.56. And whereas the fire department averages about 2,213 dispatches per year, according to EHP, and whereas the total budget amount in account 101-7-3390-818-00 for fiscal year 2021 is $36,526.28 for 12 months. Fire department will need an additional $4,989.58 to cover the remaining two months, followed to complete the fiscal year 2021 dispatch costs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council authorized the fire department to adjust the budget to fund the EHP agreement for dispatch services.
I'll move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, moved by Councilmember Wilcox and supported by, uh, Councilmember Morgan. Um, Chief Hobbs, do you have anything to say to us on this resolution?
Uh, no, no, I appreciate you guys approving that. Uh, basically, uh, short notification from HBA, they had to make some budget adjustments, and they had to pass the cost on to all the departments in Washtenaw County, and that was our portion of it, so we had to read the budget.
Okay, Councilmember Morgan?
Chief, question, do HBA, when they respond in the city, are they responding to EMU also, and does that change our costs at all?
Uh, it does not change our costs, they, they, uh, they basically per dispatch, and yes, they do respond to, to EMU. They respond everywhere, we respond within the city limits.
But, the fire, they pay the fire different, they pay the fire separate costs for us responding there, so they don't pay HBA for response?
No, I mean, we, you're talking about the state funded revenue to the grant 289, no. But, uh, HBA doesn't receive those funds, only the city receives those funds, but that's because they only do, we provide the EMS service. We are the primary fire service for, for Eastern Michigan University.
But you also
They have no police department, not a fire service, so basically, they, they fund that to, to, you know, assess the city and the fire department with the cost.
But you guys are first responders and do life-saving, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, that's what HBA do, they're first responders and do life-saving also, you would imagine, but thank you.
They, they build people for that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilcox?
I think Councilmember Morgan makes a good point. I mean, if, if the, um, if the funding from the state level isn't, doesn't specifically cover, these emergency responders, then, then this is something that EMU is getting out of our pocket. Right? I mean, so, if, you know, if, if the state is covering EMU's cost, is it, is there any language in there that, yeah, we're doing this for, for your cost specifically, chief, and then the cost of this? Or, you know, I think what, what, what Anthony was getting at was that this, this seems like we're paying a bill for EMU, and they're not, they're not ponying up for this.
So, you're saying the specific runs, break down the number of runs to Eastern Michigan University?
Right, and, you know, if, if, I get that they're within the city limits, and that's a, it's a, you know, that's one way of looking at it, but at the same time, it's like, those are, those are costs, and, and student bodies are often, uh, uh, more at risk than other parts of the population for emergency calls, so it's just like, you know, what, what part is EMU playing in terms of paying that?
I'd have to go through the whole grant for the 289 fund, but basically, it, it's based on the, the, the value of the property that we protect, and then, and that the medical portion falls under there, like I said, when it's 100% funded, really, like it was last year, we're looking at almost a million dollars, so I think that cost, the cost included in there.
Okay.
There's almost a third, they're almost, if, if they're, uh, if they're 100% funded in 289, it's almost a third of our budget.
Right.
That we receive from the state.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Uh, what we're talking about is that because the city protects state-owned property in the city, there's a state statute that requires the state to reimburse the city on a formula, and, uh, historically, the state has not reimbursed us as much as the formula requires. This last year, we got, uh, a lot more, I don't think we got 100%, but we got more of what the state requires that the state pay us, and that's to pay for the fire that the city gives to the university.
So, did that answer your question, Councilmember Morgan and Wilcox?
I guess it would not 100%, I mean, I guess he said the number is basically, it's in the pudding, like, I guess it's, uh, it's added in, so I can't really be upset at that, and like, like Attorney Barr said, we've gotten, gotten more over the last year or so than we've had, so that may continue. So, I just wanted to make sure Eastern is always, always making sure, you know, taking care of that part of the responsibility of the city.
I concur.
I agree.
And this resolution doesn't really do anything to change that structure, it's just
No, it does not, no, it does not.
It's just there, right?
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, uh, Clerk Colanga, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Bro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes votes.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you. The next item on the agenda, please.
This item is supporting the passage of the Washtenaw County Road Village Resolution 2020-154, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas Washtenaw County voters approved a four-year uh, .5 mil village in 2016 to fund road and non-motorized improvement projects, and whereas from 2017, 2020, the village provided approximately 125,000 per year to the city of Ypsilanti for various resurfacing projects, and whereas the village is funding non-motorized improvements to the trails at Frog Island Park and on Grove Street through the Washtenaw County Connected Communities Grant Program, and whereas the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners approved ballot language and is seeking renewal of the .5 millage, mil, village at August 4th, at the August 4th, 2020 election, and whereas the village provides support for the city to meet its road and non-motorized transportation goals. Now, therefore, it is all that the city of Ypsilanti supports the passage of .5 mil 2020 through 2024, Washtenaw County-wide road and non-motorized village that will be on the August 4th, 2020 ballot.
So, move.
Support.
It's been moved in second, moved by, uh, Councilmember Morgan and, um, supported by Councilmember Wilcox. Uh, I see Mr. Akers, you have a presentation for us, so you want to talk to us about this resolution?
Yes, Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
So, the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners has placed the proposal to renew the countywide road and non-motorized village from 2021, 2024, on the August 4th primary ballot. Village provides approximately $125,000 each year to the city for road maintenance work, and of the total village, um, that's gathered countywide, 20% of that revenue is actually set aside for non-motorized improvements within the county. Um, the city of Ypsilanti has received grant funding through this village for trail improvements at Frog Island Park and on Grove Street, and if this village is approved in August, we've actually been in discussions with the county um, to have some funds to support the Huron Street pedestrian bridge over I-94. Um, other communities in the county have passed resolutions in support of this village, including Ann Arbor and Dexter, um, and the committee that's working on the village actually reached out to us to ask if the city of Ypsilanti would be interested in passing resolutions in support. Uh, so based on that, we put together a draft resolution for council's consideration. We've included in the packet, uh, the draft resolution and the proposed projects which city council selected for the funds at our meetings in December, February, and, uh, a presentation that was put forward by the Washtenaw County Road Commission about the village. So, that's basically concludes my overview of the agenda item, and I'm happy to answer any questions, Councilman.
Any questions for Mr. Akers? Councilmember Morgan?
I'm, I'm gonna be really short, I, 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 when you say the .5 mil, like, we're capturing $125,000 per year?
Uh, yes, so, so less than 20% that goes to non-motorized.
So, that's a half a million dollars, correct?
Uh,
100.
So, the half, so the half mil, the, um, and I, and, you know, Reagan, if I butcher this, let me know, but, um, with property tax assessments, so it's, it's, you know, one mil of property tax assessments is like $1 for every thousand dollars of taxable value on the property. Um, so it really depends on, on how the property's assessed, how the, uh, value goes. I don't have it in front of me as to what .5 mils would be for, um, uh, you know, a certain value of home. I, I could do the math, but, um, it'd take me a second, so.
That's okay. My question, my question is much smaller than that. It says, uh, village funds will help leverage more than $13 million in non-motorized projects across the country. How much is that gonna leverage for Ypsilanti?
So, the projects are competitive. Um, the Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation Commission is tasked with selecting those projects. Um, I do know that we've talked about having at least $100,000 of that go towards the Huron Street pedestrian bridge, and we're still discussing that, we'll have to apply for those funds, um, when the bridge project comes up, but there's always the opportunity for the city to apply and be selected for other projects. Um, one of the things that they look at, uh, that they try to support are improvements to the border-to-border trail. I know the two projects that they're doing this year on Frog Island and Grove are, are two segments that, that have been funded through the project. I think they're discussing with Eastern about doing some projects through the campus too, where the border goes through, uh, there. So, there is the potential for more money to be coming from the city.
Okay, is restriping and repainting a part of, like, when you're thinking about non-motorized safety and things, are, are restriping and things of that nature a part of those, uh, services that you would do also, with that money?
It could be, it depends on the, the trail and what the plans are, you know, if a portion of the trail ends up going down the road, requires that, the funds could certainly be used to support it.
Okay, and we did have, uh, the big plan we just did, our, our future plan, and I'm sure with non-motorized, uh, there's some, there's some input from the non-motorized groups that could use some of the money, correct? From our, what is that called, our, our, um, the big plan we just did? Come on, help me, uh, Andrew.
Master plan?
Yes, there it is, the master plan, so I'm sure that there's non-motorized, uh, good things when it comes to, uh, how we can, uh, leverage some of that money that we may capture. But thank you, Brian, I appreciate the streets, uh, every time I look across the street, I just, I walk without trip, it's amazing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons, was your hand up, or you were just, okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Akers, is this a, um, a continuing village, or are they asking, would this be a new village?
Uh, so this is a renewal, um, so we currently are paying the .5 mils, and this would just extend it for another four years.
It's not increasing, but just extending?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any other council members? Somerville, do you have any questions or comments? No? Okay, uh, Clerk Colanga, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes votes.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Clerk Colanga, the next item on the agenda?
Mayor, the, the next item on the agenda is a Boarding Commission Communication. It is the Sustainability Commission Resolution Number 2020-002, um, regarding, um, including pollinator-friendly plants on private property.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to speak to this, I'm the liaison to the Sustainability Commission. Um, in the last year, we've had a number of, uh, incidents in when, uh, in which, uh, people, uh, citizens have been reported by their neighbors for having, uh, gardens that, that were not up to what the complainant thought should be, um, and, and incited the blight ordinance. Um, and Kate had spoken to this earlier, um, in the, in the public comments. Um, so, some time ago, uh, this was brought before the Sustainability Commission, uh, we talked about making this, um, addressing the, the particular ordinances and, and making this in line with the noxious weeds, uh, from the state level. Commissioner, uh, Greenwald had, had consulted a number of ecologists and, and botanists about the, the particular things. And so, the, the botany and the, and the biology of this is correct. Um, and speaking with Bonnie and Bonnie Westler and, and Joe Myers, the ordinance incited in this ordinance and in this resolution are not correct. Um, so, uh, Joe and I have talked about having a meeting in the next week, and then bringing this forward as bringing this forward as a, as a council resolution in which the, the structure of what, uh, the Sustainability Commission has proposed here for the biology is correct, but, but shoring up the, uh, the ordinance's part and, and looking at what needs to be addressed in that realm. So, um, I think they did a great job in, in putting this together in, in that respect. But we need to clean this up and, and I will be proposing a, a council resolution to address this, uh, incorporating the information that they have here, so. And I, uh, will do that by the next council meeting, so.
Clerk Colinga?
I'm just to advise council, this would require an ordinance amendment in order, in order to really have teeth. The Administrative Hearings Bureau operates and enforces ordinances. So in order for there to be a change to this, it would require an ordinance amendment.
Thank you. So Councilmember Will Coxon, will you?
So I'll, I'll work with Joe and, uh, Annie Somerville has, uh, expressed interest in this because she's been talking with Kate. And so I'll meet with staff and, and come up with an ordinance, um, change of ordinance, uh, for the next meeting.
Councilmember Morgan?
Um, I, I have in the past spoken to Kate about this and, um, and I do think pollinators' lives do matter, right? Uh, uh, not however, but I do, I would like to know, um, again, how pollen, and, and of course, beyond what science teaches us, but how pollinators, um, how having those things contributes to mental health? I think it'd be, uh, a good research behind that, um, how gardens promote well-being and how it contributes to the well-being of all citizens. I do think, as important as this is, I think it's a very small group of people who support this. I think it's a lot of people in the city who are unaware of some of these realities, um, especially on a scientific research, uh, basis. Um, I do think it's necessary. I do think, uh, bees and butterflies have every right to exist, um. But I do think the city has a right to enforce its ordinance, as long as it's clear, concise, and enforceable. So, um, I don't know how immediate, uh, again, we're thinking about how immediate the danger is for some of these, um, animals, like, uh, bees and butterflies, and how swift we are to move and act when these things are in jeopardy. So I do, uh, I do appreciate, um, some of the work we're doing to support some of the, the grass and, and, and the, the, all of the, um, there's a lot of things on that list, the different weeds and, and the noxious weeds and things, and I appreciate that. I'm not a botanist or, uh, horticulturist by no means. However, I do think it's important for wildlife and animals to have their, um, their space to grow. But I do think it needs to, for me to support it, really, I want to know how it makes the city overall, um, better. As opposed to like having chicken farms or having individual people having little pieces of heaven to make their life easier, which I solely support, um, gardens and things of that nature. However, I don't think it's a citywide issue. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Will Coxon?
Um, I appreciate the sentiments of, of Mr. Morgan. I think this is a citywide issue because I think there, this has happened in, in every ward in the city. And, and I agree that not everybody's paying attention to this and it's not pervasive, but it, it has been a recurring theme, and we've seen this throughout the last year coming in. And, and, and the question is, you do a balance of, of preserving natural environments versus the blight ordinance, which has an intended purpose, but it, it gets interpreted in ways that, that are overreaching. So, um, if, if a presentation would be helpful, I can see if we can find somebody to present at the next, uh, the next meeting, so.
And he had a thumbs up on the presentation, so. Do you have? So that's the two of you for the presentation. Okay, so you will have a presentation ready?
Yeah, I'll check, I'll check to see if, uh, if we can find somebody to, to do a presentation on this.
Okay, if not the August 18th meeting, the, the, um, meeting after, second meeting in August. Okay. All right. Okay. Clerk Colinga?
The next item on the agenda are nominations to boards and commissions. There are two nominations, both to the Police Advisory Commission. Be, uh, Eccles and Colleen Kennedy, both are from Ward Three, which would fulfill the requirement per ordinance.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Well, this is just nominations. There'll be.
Oh, these are just nomination, they not, they have not come, this is not the time that we would vote on them. This is just the first time they would have been presented?
If.
Okay.
The wishes, I can put, put them on for approval, um, during the August 11th, but I don't think it would have much of an effect as the, um, next Police Advisory Commission after uh, Thursday will not be until August 27th, so they will have been approved.
Okay, so, uh, would you put them on for the, uh, August 18th, please? However, would you, um, you or Councilmember, uh, Somerville, please encourage them to attend the PAC meeting on Thursday night?
Sure, they're actually, sorry, they're, they're, they're also here right now, um, on our meeting too, so. I let them, I let them know that they got nominated, um, and then, yep, I, I think they can hear that, and I'll remind them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your work on that, uh, Councilmember Somerville. Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, I talked to, um, both, uh, Colleen Kennedy and Renee Eccles, um, about this, and I'm glad that they applied, so.
I am too, because we need, we really need all of our boards and commissions, uh, full. And I guess there would never have been anybody from three, so that will certainly add to the, uh, to the pack. So thank you very much for that, okay?
No problem. Thanks for attending, Colleen and Renee. I know we can't see you, but.
Yes, thanks for being here. Okay, Councilmember Will Coxon? I'm sorry. I'm looking at Clerk Colinga and I'm calling you.
Generic bald guy with mustache and glasses, is that what you're saying? Sorry, Andrew. I mean, you know, that, that would be a compliment to me to be confused for you, but, uh, sorry.
The next item on the agenda is council proposed business.
Okay, I will just go straight down. Uh, Councilmember Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have very little business today. Uh, I did forward an email to you guys from a student from EMU. Uh, back in April, we were doing this race relations and politics research paper, in which I helped support her and her team through, and, um, it's, um, an overview of some of the findings that she had, so I forwarded them on to you guys. Although some of that information is outdated due to some of the happenings in the last two or three weeks, um, to keep it up, but, um, I, you guys, it's, it's informative, and I think that, um, there are some things that we probably can add to it, take away in, in their current research. So I was, I was excited to be a part of that, um. Um, the, the YCUA, um, I'm, I'm being on the, I'm, I'm the Vice President of, uh, Yucco Water Advisory Board, so I think there's a meeting, well, we have a meeting coming up on the 27th. And I think that public meeting has been, um, posted already, and so we definitely can, uh, as, as members of council should have some idea of what's going on over there. Um. I, I did not get too deep into it, but I, I read a little bit about, um, the ranked choice voting. And it's just the language surrounding the ranked choice voting. It's some things that when people say things like, uh, we want to get in there who we really want in there, or having to choose from the lesser of two evils, um. I think those things, um, when it comes to representing the government, uh, very, very rarely is everyone going to be fairly represented when there's so many people, and, and, and by sure, the numbers of people you have, uh, running for offices or whatnot. So, um, I think finding a more collective, and I'm gonna dig deeper into how that is, uh, because I know even though everyone votes, we understand that the Electoral College is a way to offset the, the majority vote. So it's already a clause within there to undo the democratic process, and so it's, it's, we know these things, so it's not attempting to, um, so I'm looking more into that. And the last thing is, um, the, the traffic column, you know, on Cross Street, I, I think some of the Cross Street, uh, four, three, um, constituents, we're talking about, um, having some of those measures put in, some of the, um, the traffic bumps, what they call them, speed bumps, or bringing those signs over, and they need to be rotated, those electronic speed, um, what do you call it, speed, um, the things that track speed when you're moving down, I know they're, they're, I think it's about three of them in the city, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and I think, you know, you should, you know, put a few of them across the street so we can measure that. And, um, and I will be having a conversation with Mr. Yap. Um, I want to sit down with him and just hear what he has to say in entirety. And again, um, we're moving forward. I, 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 I don't, I, I wasn't here 10 years ago, 11 years ago, 20, so I won't pretend to have that kind of institutional knowledge readily available, but I am open to finding new solutions to old problems. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, one question for you, or maybe two. The email that you sent us on the, uh, race and politics.
Yes.
Study you did, when did you send that email?
I sent it the night, uh, right, right around five.
Okay.
Right around six o'clock, so it was this evening, so.
Okay, all right. I just wanted, I just hadn't seen it. I wanted to make sure that it wasn't some time ago and it got lost, and, okay.
It's probably, they sent it this evening, so.
All right, thank you. And thank you, uh, also for, um, being willing to, to talk with, uh, Mr. Yap. We, I'm sorry that you and, uh, Councilmember Somerville were not able to join us in the meeting we had this morning, but, um, thank you.
Can I ask the last question? My daughter, uh, would it be a conflict of interest if my daughter served on any board?
Mr. Bauer? That's a question for Mr. Bauer. Yes.
There's a provision in the city charter that prevents nepotism. I'm gonna have to take a look at that and then I can get back to you on that.
We don't want nepotism here.
Okay, would it be nepotism if she's not getting paid? Thank you. All right, Anthony, uh, hopefully. Councilmember, uh, Will Coxon, you were raising your hand. You got an answer for it?
I was just gonna say, if there's an ethical violation, then, then having Gail be on the police commission would, would fit that as well. So I, I don't think that's, I think there's precedent there. I don't think you have to.
I'm clearly pointing the finger.
Yeah, I know, I know. I, you know, I feel the finger.
No, that's cool, no, I.
And I'm so glad y'all getting paid. I, I'm so glad they getting really paid for these boards and commissions that they working hard on. I really.
Yeah, I don't want a conflict of interest. I do want her to serve, but I will, of the opinion of Attorney Brown. Thank you.
I understand, I understand. Um, okay. Uh, Councilmember Somerville, you're, there's, you're smiling. You're all set. Tell us some good stuff.
Um, I don't have a lot to say. Um, I'm glad to see that we're gonna move forward with, uh, the noxious weed amendments to help with some of the things that we've been hearing over the last year. I've also been talking a lot about the speeding issues in Ward Three. Um, Special Agent Bonnie, uh, met with me recently. Um, and we talked about a lot of the speeding issues that I'm noticing and what Anthony mentioned. Um, I did notice that the rotating, the, the speed light sign, um, there's a name for that, but I noticed it on Prospect, um. I'm just noticing a lot of speeding on River Street and, um, so one thing that I mentioned is I think that they're, like, we need to reassess where some of our signage is. So I've noticed recently that when I turn off of Michigan Ave onto River, I can't really find a sign that indicates the speed limit on River. Uh, so there's just some things that I'm noticing that we might be able to do that wouldn't require, like, police enforcement, maybe. I don't know. Um, yeah, lots of speeding, so, um, my, you know, one of my things I'm trying to push is just everyone should go the speed limit and encourage, you know, driving safely. Um, it's easy to speed, but sometimes, you know, good drivers have to set the example for the rest, the rest of the group. Um, oh, I don't know. There were a few other things, but I think that mainly the speeding and, um, the noxious weed updates were my two things. Um, there's a few things that I've sent to Ron recently, and he's responded to, and I'm still trying to figure out some of the, lots of requests for speed humps in the neighborhoods, um, so.
Okay.
Everybody wants.
I think we can attribute, attribute some of the speeding to people have been so closed in that they're out daring to go, just.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, they got the need for speed.
Right, that's right, so. Trying to make up for that time that they were in. Okay, um, Councilman, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
All right, thank you. Well, yeah, um, you know, I'll just reiterate speeding is an issue, um, throughout all, I think all of our neighborhoods at this. Um, yeah, all over the city. Um, I actually wrote my notes down this time. So, uh, my first thing is I wanted to double back to, um, what Gail brought up about a liaison to the Police Advisory Commission. And I feel like there's another board that we had talked about that didn't have a liaison that we were going to, we were planning to talk about figuring out who was wanting to serve in those capacities. Um, since it's my proposed business, I'll, you know, give myself a shameless plug. I wouldn't mind, um, being a liaison to the Police Advisory Commission, but I know that there are others who are interested as well, so, um, I would really love for us to talk that through, um, sooner than later, so they can have someone who is present for the meeting, um, to fill them in on what's kind of going on at council and be the, you know, the pass-through up and down. Um. The other thing is, I saw, I actually see it on here, Mayor, you already put it on with the ATA, um, service, but I had sent an email out maybe a week ago about that as well to the city manager, um, and everyone asking questions about what that, those changes are. We've gotten more information on it, so I'm looking forward to having the short discussion during, um, the mayor's communications about what we can do to support, um, and lift the voices of those in Ward One in particular, where they are trying to remove, um, those stops on the south side, which is gonna definitely impact, um, our constituents negatively. The other is, uh, I received an email from a, a group of constituents who live, um, near Perry School in particular, and they're just really upset about the blackouts in Ward One, so whenever we have bad weather, that one particular area near Perry and Park Ridge, for, historically, always has their power out. Um, they have tried to, um, reach out to DTE, reach out and try to figure it out on their own, and they have not received the warmest responses, nor the, to me, the most professional responses, um, around, uh, what they should do to assist in moving, you know, finding some resolution. In fact, I'm actually, I pulled up the email just so that I wouldn't miss anything. Um, this one, this resident here that I'm reading email from talked about DTE actually blaming residents for the power outages, which is very interesting to me. Um, they said one neighbor was even fed a racial stereotype about utility workers who were afraid to go in backyards in case they had a gun pulled on them. So that is very frustrating to me to hear, um, from a member of our community that someone from DTE potentially, because I have no proof that this had happened, but potentially, um, is having this kind of pushback to the point of saying inappropriate thing, um, to our community members, and so I would just really like to, if it's talk with Ron, um, and our city manager and the mayor, um, about what we can do to talk to who our representatives are at DTE about, number one, how they're interacting with our constituents, but two, how we're just meeting the needs of the community, because if we're seeing blackouts in a particular area so frequently, there is a problem on that to be addressed. And so I just wanted to put it out on the table, um, and I'm gonna forward this email on to, to everyone, really, so you can see what it says, uh, and so that we can try to work with them to figure out what we can do. Uh, I know that I've called DTE before about trees on lines, and I've not always been successful, I had, um, good experiences, but never what I'm reading in this email, so just really want to have some conversations there. Um, and that is all.
Okay, thank you. And thank the DTE. Councilmember Somerville, were you?
Oh, I was just, I was just going to say, um, if you forward that on to your state senator, we can reach out to the Michigan Public Service Commission.
I'd be happy to.
Yeah.
While you're at it, forward it on to our state representative also, yes. Also, Mr. Bauer, who, uh, which staff from the city should that be, um, given to for special attention? Okay, the city manager, okay, we'll pass it on to the city manager.
The mayor?
I don't know the DTE representative now. It used to be Paul Gantz, but Paul hasn't been there for a few years. I don't know the DTE representative now. It used to be Paul Gantz, but Paul hasn't been there for a few years. And, uh, before I moved a few years ago, I used to be in that same circle where the lights would go out quite, the, quite regularly.
Hey, Mayor, can I make a motion?
They fixed it.
Can I make a motion to extend it to 1015?
Oh, yes, please.
Support.
Thank you, go ahead.
Uh, all in favor?
Mayor, in addition to the city manager, I think Mr. Akers would also be involved in that discussion.
Yeah, that's what I'm sending it to, on the city manager and Mr. Akers.
And Brown. Okay, very good. Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Morgan, for paying attention to that.
You have to vote on it.
So much for our nine o'clock, yeah, eight thirty.
We have to vote.
You gotta vote on it.
Yes, I know, council, I mean, clerkalinga, would you call that? Or do we have to have a, a roll call vote to extend?
Do a voice vote for this.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
I, okay. Alright, I heard the majority. Okay, uh, Councilmembers Simon Simmons, please.
Actually, I don't have anything at this point, so that'll help move it along.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Wilcoxon.
Hi, thank you. Uh, going back to, um, uh, Mayor Pro Tim's, uh, comments, I think last meeting we talked about having liaisons in all the commissions, um, and, and going back to that. So I think that, that's an important thing to, to pick up too, because, um, well, I just think it's important. Um, so as that role in the Sustainability Commission, uh, not only were we working on, uh, where they're working on the, um, the blight and the pollinators, uh, Commissioner Gibbons had, had put forth a draft for a, a social justice and environmental justice resolution that they're working on. And, um, you know, it's the first draft, and they'll be discussing this over time and probably bring it to the, um, council, uh, in the next couple of meetings. They're also working on the Sustainability Plan, which is part of our master plan. Um, and they're making good progress on that with the consultants that we brought in. Uh, a number of comments have been submitted and those will be incorporated. Um, what's gonna happen is all those, uh, comments from the individual commissioners will be sent to the chair and he will collate those and then send them on to the, to the consultants to be included in the plan. Um, and then that will come up, you know, this is about a year overdue on the master plan, um, I think. So they're working on that. Um, what else they have going on? Uh, I received complaints, uh, you know, we, we passed a resolution to, uh, close streets and open up, uh, space for, uh, you know, businesses, uh, downtown in the Depot Town for, uh, you know, expanded seating so that, that they could get back to business. And, and I've had complaints about the noise. Um, you know, in Depot Town, there's live music five nights a week, that some, some residents have complained about, and then on Washington Street, uh, you know, that's also a concern because there are DJs on Friday and Saturday nights. Um, and, you know, the, the permits that people get, you know, the, the ordinance for the permit, this is an individual basis in there, that has to be considered, but these permits have been, um, extended, um, you know, through September, and it's not on an individual basis. You know, it's, it's a blanket permit for this, and the, and a lot of the residents are not, not happy with the situation, so I think we need to address that. I was hoping that the, uh, city manager was here tonight, but I'll take it up with her and I'll take it up with the chief. Um, I've done this in the past, um, when Bonacero was on, on Washington and Michigan, um, the same thing happened regularly. They got, they got permits for, for noise ordinances that were not, um, within the limits of what the, the ordinance states. So, um, I was hoping to address that tonight with them, but I'll, I'll take that up via email, so.
Okay, thank you. So is that it? Okay.
Thanks.
Alright, um, since the city manager's not here, I think, uh, I meant, I guess the mayor follows, um, council anyway. Uh, is Mr. Akers still here? Yes. Uh, Mr. Akers, um, I got a call again on, um, oh gosh, was it yesterday or today? From, um, John Harrington, again about the, the building that the city owns there on Huron Street. What is it, um, 220 Huron?
I think it's 220 to 16.
Yeah, and he said that, um, the squatters are still there, they're still doing, um, their due out and back, and that they burst out a wind, a basement window, and that's how they got in to open the door. And I guess now they're going in and out of the door. Um, Bell for, I mean, uh, the board, the building had been boarded up, but I guess they have torn the, uh, boardings off, the boards off. So if you could please check on that, um, and get the building re-boarded, if that's what is needed. Um, where are we? I, it's, um, I think this might be a question for Joe. Joe, where are we on, um, a buyer for that building?
So, uh, it's, it's almost shocking to, to hear this. After you reached out, um, this weekend, we went out and actually, we didn't observe any sort of, um, issue. No broken windows, no, no anything, and it was boarded up and sealed. Um, so we'll go through and, and take another look. It's, it's out for an RFP right now. They're due back in August, and so hopefully we'll have, uh, for council, uh, the first meeting of September. But, um, I had our code enforcement officer out there yesterday, and she didn't see any sign of disturbance. The, the doors were secured. Um, and so it's a little bit shocking.
All the windows were closed? I mean, were covered?
Well, so most of them haven't been broken, but I was, I think last week as well, there wasn't any broken windows. So, uh, I, I will, I will personally go out there, uh, probably tomorrow or, or Thursday to make sure of that. Um, but we can't really board up everything right now because we are actively giving tours, uh, to, to prospective buyers. But I didn't see any sign, and we, we did a very, I did two very thorough tours, and I didn't see anyone squatting. I didn't smell any urine, I didn't smell any, anything.
Okay.
The ordinary, so.
Okay, alright, well, I'm, I'm, I've got the, I wrote down the number that, the address that he talked about, so, but anyway. Uh, do we own more than one building in that same vicinity?
No, that's the main one that we, I mean, i- if there's gonna be an issue, it'd be there.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, um, oh, uh, I guess this goes to you, Mr. May Akers. I've had a request for, um, and this is not a new request. They requested it before. I brought it, mentioned it to at council some time ago. But a request for, um, speed bumps on Burton Court. You wouldn't think it because that is a cul-de-sac, but people fly down that street like they're going on 94. And then they go around that circle and come back up flying. So if you could maybe take a check on that for me. Okay. Um, okay, um, oh, council, I sent out a new, um, I'm not sure if I sent it out by text or by email today. I had asked before if you would, uh, each council person would recommend a couple of, more than some people, not just a couple, but some people from your, uh, ward that, uh, might be good to participate, uh, the members of the, uh, Race and Equity Advisory Cabinet. So please, could you get the, the names to me so that I can, uh, I am talking to some people now, but would like to, um, get that going. Yes, Councilmember Morgan?
What's the commitment like for that, the, the commission?
Okay, it's, it will be a, uh, hurry up in the beginning, and then it will phase out. So we're probably looking at maybe, um, maybe three months or so. Because what this commission would do would help to formulate a plan, uh, to help bring healing.
Okay.
Okay. So it would be a lot of work in the beginning, but then it would begin to phase out, so.
I'm just thinking about how many, like, like, like how many hours would somebody have to donate? Like, is it like a 20 hours, 30 hours? You know?
Oh, I haven't broken it down into hours.
Okay, because I know it's gonna take some time, a lot of dialogue, a lot of facilitation.
Right, yes, so I haven't broken it down into hours.
But I'll, I'll, I'll forward some of those names like you said.
Alright, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, and that brings me to, um, the bus issue. I believe I included, I believe I sent, um, the email that I received from Mr. Carpenter. I believe I sent, had all of council on that, uh, that email. Did everyone get that? What they're planning to do. And I do have a meeting with, um, tomorrow morning with, uh, Commissioner Jefferson, um, Matt Carpenter, Representative Peterson, and I'm not sure if, uh, Bryn, and I think Brenda Stumbo's gonna be on that meeting also, but, uh, about the services that are coming in. Uh, what they're planning to do is really, um, for me, really, um, unfair to, uh, the south side here, in that they were planning to stop all the buses from coming in. The bus would still go up, there would be no bus on Harriet Street, no bus on, it comes around Jefferson first, or anyone here would have to walk to Michigan Ave to, uh, catch the bus. And like I told them, you know, there's no way I could walk to Michigan Ave to catch the bus. The thing, I think, the thing that really, really, um, bothered me was that in the southern part of the township, they're, uh, doing away with some of the, the routes. But what they're putting in, is their, what they're offering is Flex Ride. And Flex Ride, they, the AATA, uh, contracts with Golden Limousine. And in contracting with Golden Limousine, people can get a Flex Ride from their home or from their stop to downtown, to the, uh, transit center for $1. All they're offering here in the south side is the A-Ride. And the A-Ride is $3 one way. So if someone is needing a ride that used to take the bus to work, they get a ride from door to door, but it's $3, $3 going and $3 coming. That comes to $6 a day and five days a week. If they're working five days, that's $30. For some people that are working for minimum wage or less, that's $30 a week, and for some people that is half, a quarter or a half of their food bill allowance for a week. Um, it's like, you know, the oppressed are being oppressed more, the depressed are being depressed more. So I'm not, uh, and we passed a millage, and they're still operating off of our millage money for, uh, bus service. So I'm meeting with them tomorrow. I did ask, uh, people, there were a number of people on, that I sent the email to, and asking them to write letters and to also ask other, others to write letters. So I'm asking council if you would also reach out to your friends, your neighbors, your constituents, and ask them to, uh, to write a letter to AATA. Um, this, I understand, you know, I got a reply from Mr. Carpenter, well, one person that sent him a letter. He did reply to her, and he sent her a new, uh, New York Times article that was, that covered transportation all over the country and showed how they were having to cut back. And yes, but, um, it's how you do it that's concerning me. Councilmember Morgan?
I just wanna make this open blanket statement. It's just reflects me only, not the will of council. I just wanna say, um, it's hard to, when organizations, like, again, like you say, of course, we know, I know this is an economic decision, first of all. It's had to be, and I know cuts need to be made, but it's hard for certain groups of people to see the benefit when they're always potentially on the outskirts of these decisions. And so not only is it an economic decision, it's strategic limiting. This is a strategic way to limit access, and it's a structural inequity at its, at its core. And so, but I'm interested to see the research that brought them to the decision that this is what they had to do. I'm open to seeing that. And I just wanna say, uh, again, i- i- it's, and I know, this is something that has to happen within an organization. However, it's always, it appears, again, just appears, that people who have less are getting, uh, more of the obstacles. And so if they don't want it to look like that, they wouldn't have structured it that way. And so I know they're trimming the fat, but in that, some people get trimmed off too. And so it's easy to forget those who are down. So I just thought I'm gonna say, I know AATA means well, and I know they're attempting to keep their company viable, and I, and I get it, I'm not a business owner. So however, it's how it's done, and, um, and I'll do my best to, to write a supporting letter.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, um, I think, okay, uh, about the, uh, police, about PAC not getting, um, knowing about the community policing presentation tonight. I did have the opportunity on yesterday to speak with the, uh, chairman of that group, and I did let him know. He did not know either, so, um, he did, I did talk to him and let him know. I know that there was a question about a, uh, joint meeting with, um, PAC. And, um, so that we can end on time, I would like to just ask, um, everyone to keep that in mind. I will talk with the chairman of PAC again, and we can see if we can come up with a couple of dates to, and, um, run them by, uh, council to see what works for them and what works for the PAC members, so that we can have our joint meeting. Because I know some council members did want that. So I believe that's, um, that's everything from me right now. So, uh, clerkalinga?
Um, if I could go over this memo from the, the, the county about, um, an absentee voter counterboard consolidation?
Yes.
This is going to take a budget, uh, budget allocation, um, from the city, and I'm gonna be bringing it to the, uh, next council meeting. I just wanted to touch on it now. Um, this would be an initial investment of around $10,000, and then maintenance fees around, uh, $3,600 annually. Uh, this is really going to be important moving forward for elections. The high-speed tabulator can handle up to, you know, 80,000 ballots, um, in a very short period of time. Uh, the tabulators that we currently have, we will have three operating in, in the count board this time. Uh, we already have 3,400 ballots sent. We've had nearly 700 returned. And this is going to only probably double for the general election. Um, so I want councils to keep in mind with that, um, that this will be coming before them in the next, uh, council meeting. Also, there's going to, I'm going to speak with the city manager and finance director and HR about other needs uh, specific to elections moving forward with the pandemic and then the, uh, changes, uh, in 2018. It's gonna be a dramatic increase in absentee ballot. We, at, at the county last, um, this was a couple of weeks ago also, there was 60,000 absentee ballots sent. Uh, the last, um, record was 40,000 in, uh, 2018. I mean, that was also two weeks ago, so that's only increased since then. And then you can imagine that's going to double in, uh, November. So there's going to be a lot of changes in elections, and, um, quite frankly, the clerk department's going to need more funding in order to address that properly. Currently, the, all, all staff is working on, um, absentee ballots, uh, but it's very difficult to keep on top of other work. but it's very difficult to keep on top of other work. So there, there will be needed change moving forward.
So Andrew, are you going to need some temp help during?
Yeah, we'll need temp help. I would, there, again, I want to speak with the city manager prior to this, but there is going to be temporary assistance, and I would like to see another full-time staff member. There used to be an elections clerk, and I would kind of basically morph that into other, other, other aspects of the clerk department to, you know, keep that person busy. But in terms of elections, it's, we just don't have the capacity to keep up as absentee ballots and.
Right, okay. Okay, so please do talk with the city managers so that adjustments can be made in the budget that can be brought to council for approval because this is, this election is extremely important. All elections are important, but this one, this year is, I think, is going to be extremely important. So whatever we can do to help, I'm sure that council all agrees that we will want to do that. Mr. Bauer?
In regard to Andrew's problem with absentee ballots, I'd like to remind council that this comes from the state. They've changed the election procedure, but they haven't funded it.
Okay.
And perhaps we know some representatives could look into it.
So we need to once again reach out to our representative and our senator, yeah.
Maybe a state senator or a staff person or something.
Right, yeah.
Good joke, yes, but yes, no, yes. Well, you'll notice that your state senator introduced a bill to make it permanent. No polling locations.
Do you know?
Senator, I mean, Member Morgan, we got two minutes before 10:15, so go.
No, I was just going to ask Clerk Colinga. I saw after the governor, Whitworth, the meeting, the virtual meetings, like, we're going to be 28 days. Like, are we still going to keep a virtual meeting? But this is what I was going to say. When we come to legislation, we're talking about senators, state reps. We haven't had a viable piece of legislation for brown people since 1968. We're those thoughtful, clever, linguist people who can put something together that would extend or do away with the voters' right act. That would do something to give us some teeth. We think of that all as policy, but I don't want to get into that. That's what I'm saying, I want to close my mouth. But how about some credible litigation or some credible policy that closes 52-year gap since 68? How about that? Do we have those people anywhere on deck? Anywhere in the House of Representatives, Senate? Anyway, I digressed.
Okay, very good. I have one last thing to say, and then we will be out of time. Please, I heard Congresswoman Dingell say yesterday that Ipsilani is behind. Can I get a move, someone extend the meeting for five minutes, please?
I would extend the meeting for five minutes till 10:20.
Support.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Say that Ipsilani is low on census returns. So please, if we could all reach out to our constituents and encourage them to complete the census, if everyone maybe did a two or three-minute PSA and put it on Facebook or YouTube or wherever you do, Instagram, whatever social media you use, just asking the people of Ipsilani to complete the census. Our, the funds coming into our area depends upon how we respond to the census. So please, there's still a few more days. I think it's, they extended it to October, I believe, but still, we need to get that done. Okay, is there anyone else that has anything that they would like to bring up? Councilmember Wilcoxen?
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Okay. Is there a second?
Support.
For, it has been properly moved and seconded, supported, that for this meeting to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Somerville, did you have something you weren't voting?
Oh, I was in deep thought about why we don't fund, you know, elections properly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, there was a majority to end this meeting. It was good seeing all of you. Have a good night, stay safe, stay well, and stay cool, because it's going to get hot again.
Have a wonderful evening, folks.